I'd like to call the order of the Avalon City Council meeting to also include a meeting of the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency of September 20th. And if we could have Mayor Protem Olsson please lead us in the flag salute.
Please stand. Hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I just have a small invocation today. Dear Heavenly Father, please grant us just a bit of your compassion and wisdom while we work together as a community. As we struggle together to find an earthly solution to our water deficit, resolve the issue of decent affordable housing for our residents, and create a welcoming community for our visitors, may you guide us to respect each other. Grant us the strength to understand that by speaking openly and honestly, and sometime bluntly, sometimes bluntly should not be taken offensively, but rather an opportunity to delve into the heart of the problem for a solution. Grant us the patience to listen and understand other views and opinion. In your name we pray. Amen. Announcements.
Hold the word.
Oh, and roll call, please.
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Olsson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
Announcements. Do we have any announcements? I guess nobody has any announcements. Denise?
Written communication.
Okay. City manager report.
I have no report, Mayor.
Okay. City attorney report.
I'll get my report later tonight during the water presentation.
Councilmembers, who would like to start? Mayor Protem?
Cindy was leading forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy.
I just have two. I attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government and Transportation Committee meetings. There was significant conversation and discussion with Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti regarding Measure M. Very interesting to hear his perspective and talk a little bit more about those transportation dollars. And this past Saturday, the Catalina Island Women's Forum had their annual Wine Festival, which proceeds go to support the scholarship fund for the youth girls in our community as part of the mentoring program. And I'd like to say a big thank you to the Public Works Department for their help, especially Frank Rojo, who came late in the evening to assist, and David Hart and Recreation, and always Eddie Vega, who should, we should recognize more for some of the efforts in the community that he does as well. So, thank you to the city for all the support.
My turn? Sure.
Let's see. I attended a meeting, and it was up at the country club, up at the, let's see, the hotel.
Yeah, the new name?
Yeah, exactly.
Canyon?
Canyon, yeah, that's right, Canyon. It's a nice hotel. The hotel is really nice, by the way, but we had a nice, a nice study session. It was a workshop, and it involved planning for the future. It had to do with transportation, water. We had, it was, it was very good. I just wanted to let you know I did that and took notes. And also, I wanted to thank just the community members that come up to us and let us know what's on your mind. We have to hear from you in order to understand exactly what direction we want to go, how we're going to mitigate problems, and what's on your mind is really important to us. So, don't be bashful, and you've got our phone numbers if you need them. Stop us on the street and let us know what's on your mind, and that way we can make the community better with your help. And your help does, and your voice does matter. And we do listen to you, and I appreciate any emails you send, or any phone calls, or any messages you want to give us. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hernandez?
I just have a couple of questions, just getting back to our developer fees, not really reporting. Do we have any, any direction on that yet? I know the developer fee, or contractor's fee.
We are supposed to bring to you, to do developers' fees, as I know that was a question that you asked during the, when I was interviewed, about developer fees. We need to do a study to evaluate the apportion cost for development in order to levy the fees, and we have discussed it internally. What we need to do is bring forward the, the, the study that needs to be done on development fees, because it is on that study and its results is what we base, we base development fees. Now, there's one exception to the rule, sir. The one exception is that through development agreements, you don't need the study to, to, to charge a fee if the other party agrees. And of course, development agreements are the way that, I understand that you have operated in the past. So, to answer your question, we need to bring you in October, and I know Denise will now be noting, reminding all of us, that, that we need to bring you that study to do the actual fee-based analysis.
And if I can, we have prepared, because you need to hire an engineer to do that study, so we have prepared an RFP for that process. So, we will be beginning that process to go out and get a qualified firm to do that study, but in the meantime, we do have the ability under our municipal code for development agreements.
Yeah. But that doesn't seem to be working too well.
Well, we.
I mean, with that fee, because of the infrastructure in the city, it still hasn't been dealt with yet, and this is why I'm bringing it up. I'd like to see if we can get expedited a little bit more.
Yes, sir.
And see if we can get that going, because we might be missing out on construction pretty soon.
May I, councilmember, mention this also, that my understanding, and we'll have to check with the city attorney in this regard, that if you are in the process of developing development fees, that you can, you can establish, I believe, but this I'll have to verify, but I mentioned this, that you can establish an interim ordinance that may allow you to set a cap on what that fee is, so that you can capture the fee and not lose it from development that's moving forward. And we will check, and I will get back to you personally on that.
Okay.
And Mayor, once the council reports are done, I did remember, I do have a report from the city attorney on CUPs from last meeting. Once all the councils.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, ma'am. I also attended the Contract Cities meeting at Canyon Hotel with Joe, and Annie did, Mayor Marshall did the opening remarks very nicely in that morning, then she ran off to do something more fun than sitting for eight hours in meetings. The evening, they honored Don Knabbe again, he deserves. And I think that's about it.
I would like to say, if you haven't seen this Parks and Rec flyer, it is absolutely wonderful. And I should be specific, it is wonderful because on the back, it tells you where local parks and venues are with a lovely map. It's fantastic. They've created four senior programs now, with the senior meals, it's always been there, but there's games with friends that happened today, and there's a stretch class that was yesterday. So, all of my friends that are seniors, we could start going, because it's pretty wonderful. There's open gym, so they're working well with the school, it looks like, to create programs. Registration forms in here. Homework club, that's fantastic. And the Teen Advisory Council that they've started under Dan. Sand, soccer, gymnastics. Anyway, there's a lot of good stuff happening, and I want to commend the Parks and Rec Community Service staff. This is awesome. Thank you very much.
Good job, Dan.
Yeah, and I don't know, they pick these up here, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, so be sure to grab one when you go out and tell your friends, because it's really awesome. It's very classy. Okay, so, one-hour parking. We've had a little bit of discussion about one-hour parking on Catalina and Sumner. And I don't know that that is like, that's gospel, or, but where and how do we, if we're going to do that, because if, once construction starts at Vons, which probably is a few months out, and by the time we change things, I just, how do we time, and how do we, if, figure out if that's really the way we're going to go? How do we move forward on that?
Vons is supposed to, has a list of items that they need to complete in advance of any demolition or construction. I don't, by memory, know the list, but I know that part of that has to do with parking, and it has to do with delivery schedules, and then there are other, more, other different types of requirements, but that study has, or that submittal, by them, has not, to my knowledge, been received. I'm looking for Amanda. No, it has not been received. When it is received, that will be brought back, then, to the, to the council for, for its review and determination. Just because they are required to submit something, it doesn't mean that you are required to accept it. It's a, you have to evaluate it, we'll evaluate it, we'll do, staff will do an evaluation, we'll bring it back to you.
Sure. Okay. I just don't want us to, go ahead.
Another thing is, part of that one-hour parking discussion is that there'll be some residential parking permits that will allow people to park.
Exactly.
And so, I think to implement that, we start sticker in vehicles, what, March 1st?
Mm-hmm.
So, we should be ready to implement that by March 1st, so we don't have to sticker vehicles and come back and re-sticker them again.
You make an excellent point, Mayor.
Please?
You make an excellent point, Mayor Protem, and we're anxious to get the response. I believe there's a meeting set up with regard to Vons Friday, where we're meeting with their construction manager, whose name is Tony Smith. And, and so, the, those questions will be posed. When will we get the information on which you can make that decision?
Okay, perfect. Very good. Okay, presentations. Do we have members of the museum here today?
Yes.
Devin, why don't you come up, too? You were going to introduce her.
Would you like to introduce the new, the first?
Do you introduce them?
Hi. I'm Devin Thompson. I'm the Director of Development at the Catalina Island Museum, and I am so excited to be up here tonight to introduce the museum's brand-new executive director, Julie Perlin-Lee. She comes to us from the Bowers Museum, and she just brings a wonderful, fresh perspective and lots of new energy into our institution, and I'm, like I said, I'm really excited to introduce her. So, here she is, Julie.
Thank you, Devin. Very sweet. And to you, Mayor Marshall, and to the city council, it's nice to be in front of you for the very first time, and I hope every time is only on the best of terms. I'm sure it will be. I've only been at the museum for about six weeks, but it's been a wonderful time already, and the museum is so excited, this weekend, Saturday, to be celebrating National Museum Day, in which we will join thousands of museums across the entire United States, and welcome hundreds of thousands of Americans into our doors to celebrate creativity and our collective history. And I'm so proud that we're one of the westernmost museums in the entire nation, joining that effort.
That's true.
So, I invite all of you to be there, and also, we've arranged a very special meet-and-greet from five to seven with several of the community leaders. There's so many new of us in town, and so we hope you all can join us then as well for music and fun and museums. Thank you so much.
Right. Lots of going. Yes. So, we have, come closer, ladies. We have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon, recognizing the Catalina Island Museum in honor of National Museum Day. Whereas the Catalina Island Museum provides unique educational and cultural opportunities that play a vital role in preserving our island's rich history, telling stories about our past, while providing insight into our future by maintaining and nurturing historical links. And whereas, founded in 1953 by Philip K. Wrigley, the Catalina Island Museum has served the Avalon community for over 60 years by housing in its permanent collection over 10,000 photographs and negatives documenting island life from the early 1880s to the present day, a large and comprehensive collection of Catalina pottery and tile manufactured on the island from 1927 to 1937, and one of the largest collections of Tangva and Gabrieleño artifacts in the world. And whereas, the Catalina Island Museum will celebrate National Museum Day by inviting all museum members, island residents, and visitors to enjoy the museum's galleries, digital theater, and outdoor plazas of the new Ada Blanch Wrigley-Shriner Building, free of charge. Now, therefore, we, the Avalon City Council, do hereby recognize the Catalina Island Museum for its dedication to the promotion and preservation of Catalina Island's culture, art, and rich history, and declare September 24th, 2016, as Catalina Island Museum Day, dated this 20th day of September, 2006, by the Avalon City Council. And thank you. And welcome to Catalina.
Thanks, Dan. I'm so happy to be here.
We all are. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. All right. Okay, and was I supposed to go back to you on another item?
Yeah, I can just briefly report. At the last council meeting, the council directed our office to research some issues regarding CUPs. We've done that. The first issue was whether we can, in the future, say that conditional use permits do not run with land, and if we call them licenses, or retitle them different, we can say that they only go with the person, the current applicant, and that they do not run with the land. So, we'd have to amend your municipal code to do that, but you do have the power to do that. Second issue was whether we can either put a floor or a ceiling on the number of days that people use their residence for these uses, and the answer is yes, you can do that. We'd prefer that to be in the ordinance as well. So, those are the two legal questions that you asked. This matter will be going to the Planning Commission for a review and revamping of the ordinance, and if you wanted to give any direction on that, it would be appropriate at this time to just say you want the ordinance to consider this or not consider that.
Right.
But that means that you, you would have to change their name from a conditional use permit to something else.
Right, right, exactly. It's just a matter of wordsmithing, but, but you can legally do it, and I just feel more comfortable calling it a license.
Okay. So, I would like you to proceed in that regard, but is there going to be an issue of grandfathering?
Yeah, the people that already have it, have it, period.
Okay, okay.
So, this is only for going forward, but again, remember, the issue is if you don't use it for a year, it is subject to revocation.
Right.
And so, then you have to start over again.
Okay. And then we should, so you're also on the second issue about number of days or whatever, can we do days or dollars? Because everybody's place is a different rate.
It's better, it's better legally to do days, because that's.
Right.
That fits the actual impact on neighbors and neighboring properties, whereas dollars is more.
Right, that's.
Based upon an economic thing, not a land use thing.
Yes, okay. So, go ahead.
Okay, just to clarify that, and make sure I got my notes right, we, we do have the power to, to change the code to do a minimum number of days.
Yes, or a maximum number of days.
And we don't have that now.
Well, you could do it, it's not specifically in there right now, and so, it'd be better legally if it were in the code, so that people applying knew what, what the rules were before they applied.
And would, would that pertain to current CUPs if we change that now?
No, no. Everyone's grandfathered in on the terms they have right now, unless they change the use, or unless it's revoked for non-use.
Or sold.
No, not right now. It runs with the land. This is only for going forward.
Right, I mean, so if the land changes tomorrow, I mean, after this ordinance is in effect, then that's all new, no?
Nope. If, if they're grandfathered in, meaning under the current law, it runs with the land. So, this is, would only be for new CUP, new licenses coming in.
Okay.
Or again, if someone doesn't use it for a year, and we revoke it.
I got it. Okay, thank you. All right. Oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address.
Another proclamation.
What'd you say?
I know, but, but I wrote Vin right there, and it looked like a checkmark to me.
Oh, I have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring Vin Scully. Whereas Dodger Hall of Fame broadcaster Vin Scully returned in 2016 for his unprecedented 67th and final season with the Los Angeles Dodgers organization, and whereas the Hall of Famer's 66 years of consecutive service with the Dodgers is the longest of any sports broadcaster with one team, and whereas on the air, Vin Scully is the voice of optimism. He's humorous, lyrical, even tender. His anecdotes are perfectly fitted to what's happening on the field. Even in defeat, his jokes comfort the most sorrowful Dodger fans. In addition to calling over 9,000 Major League Baseball games, Scully has broadcast 25 World Series and 12 All-Star Games. And whereas Scully's voice is often dubbed as the soundtrack of summer in Los Angeles and Catalina Island, where his generations of fans have grown up listening to him call the Dodger baseball, and whereas the Avalon Kid, the baseball Little League team, has sent teams of island youth to Dodger Stadium annually for decades to see the boys in blue take the field, and many follow Dodger baseball all season long by listening to Vin Scully's iconic voice and give it the play-by-play. And whereas we urge Avalon residents to take the time to appreciate the treasure that is Vin Scully, as not just an announcer, but as a former baseball commissioner, Bud Segal put it, "the embodiment of goodwill that our game inspires, and a reminder why baseball is forever the national pastime." Now, therefore, we, the Avalon City Council, do hereby recognize Hall of Fame broadcaster Vin Scully for his years of dedication to the sport of baseball and to the craft of broadcasting, dated this 20th day of September, 2016, Avalon City Council, Mayor.
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
Have any.
Okay, oral communications. This is when you may speak on an item that is not on the agenda. Please limit it to three minutes, and no action will be taken. If there are questions, we do have water on the agenda today, so that anything about water will be saved to that, till that item is on the agenda.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Marshall, members of the council. A big mahalo from the Southern California Outrigger Association for the assistance they've received in, from the community, both the council's support, especially the support of our harbor master and the harbor master staff. They were absolutely thrilled with the event this year. They'd like to see us come, like to see themselves come back again and continue to make it a bigger event. So, wanted to share this with the council. This was us to be given. They were also kind enough to donate about, donate $500 to community programs, and we were kind of leaning towards expanding the water polo program, and we'll continue to do that, but I got to talking to some of the council members, got to talking to some of the community, and I think we're going to redirect that, and we'll be back at some point, buddying up to the harbor master a little bit to see where we could put a couple outriggers and start an outrigger program, both a youth program and a, an adult program. The Newport program is offered to loan two canoes, six-man canoes, so if we can find a place to store them during the offseason when we're not using them, I think we're well on our way to establishing that program.
Great.
Just a couple other announcements. Thank you. Stole some thunder, but thank you for that. The Activity Guide is out. It's available online, it's available here. Received just this afternoon, it went out on Friday, received this afternoon a phone call from somebody that's been a resident for 45 years, and just in 45 years, she was very thankful that there's a piece out there, it's concise, it's got all the information at one, in one spot. I'd like to see us get away from putting notices on light posts and phone posts and everywhere we can stick a flyer, so we're certainly heading in that direction. And I think this is just hopefully a taste of things to, taste of things to come.
Right.
So, I can get some feedback on what the community would like to see. We also have, and it's posted online, our community needs assessment, Recreation Needs Assessment, online, it'll take about five minutes. We're looking for input on what kind of programs we could be offering, how we're doing with the programs we have now, how our parks are, what kind of facilities we'd like to have in place, and it'll give us a little bit of a roadmap to where the direction the Community Service Department goes. So, we'll report back on the findings of this. We've got about 50 in at this point. It went out on Thursday, and we're hoping for 100-plus, so we're about halfway there, and we're starting to receive that feedback. Really quickly, one of the programs we started, and I'll just highlight a couple of them, gymnastics program, we, they did an orientation last night. We had 60 kids sign up for gymnastics last night. Wow. So, new program, or recently new program. Four classes with 15 in the class and a waiting list. We've got young boys and girls mixed, and already looking for where this program will go in, in future. You touched on the senior program, you touched a little bit on the teen program, thank you for that. And then we've got shovels in the ground up at Joe Machado Field, finally, as of Friday. There was a yellow light on Friday and Monday, and then our Public Works Director gave it the full green light as of yesterday to move full steam ahead, so we're hoping for about an eight-week timeframe on that to get that finished. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? Dan? No?
Is there, the Recreation Needs Assessment, or Community Services Needs Assessment, is that going to be posted in the paper as well?
I can make an announcement to it. We've got them, it's online, so we can make an announcement to where to find it. We've got them here as well. If somebody doesn't have access to computers, they can pick one up, and we can input that information.
Is there a PDF that we could send around to, or is there, I guess, could I get a PDF that I could help distribute as well?
Certainly. I'll get one out, too. Great.
I guess, I'm a little concerned that the, the survey results are going to be somewhat And I don't know if, if, if it's worth, I don't know how long the survey is, because I haven't done it yet, but, I mean, is, is there any advantage to taking some of them up to the school just on regular hard copy? Is it one page, two pages?
So, we are, and I should have said, we are up at the school today, back-to-school night. Dave and Carlos are up there for the younger kids, and we'll be up there next Tuesday as well with it, so we've got hard copies of that.
Oh, good.
As well as the Activity Guide. It's about 15 questions. It's just the start to kind of give us some guidance, and I think when we get a chance, we'll budget for a, a master plan, a recreation master plan, and look further in depth into where we should go, but this will get us, you know, started here in the near future.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other oral communications, over there she comes.
Judy Greer, 355 Descanso Avenue. If you'll bear with me, I have two different things. One is from the Catalina Art Association. It was the 58th Annual Art Association Festival this last weekend, and it came off wonderfully. If you see Laura DeMille, would you please say thank you? It was wonderful. And also Darla Fisher did the children's event, and she really put a lot of time and effort, and really tried to make it go smoothly, and, and make sure that everyone was recognized. We had a lot of children enter, and I want to thank Kathy LeFleur especially for making sure her children in her class entered. It was really fun and really a lot of participation. So, 58 years, and that was kind of a busy time. I want to thank you for participating and for everybody who showed up. Now, I'm a librarian. Okay. The Friends of the Library have won another grant. It's a matching grant, and what we're doing this time is providing mini iPads for six different lectures that we're having that have to do with digital use of the library. You know, right now, you can go to the library and get Wi-Fi any area in the library. All you have to do is go into the library and get the number, and it is constant in that area. Until we get the whole city Wi-Fi'd, that's a good place to go, and we're responsible for doing that. And now, in conjunction with that, we want to teach people how to use their digital devices to do everything related to the library. So, in light of that, we are giving one of these mini iPads each time. So, six of these will be given one at a time for six weeks. The first one is October 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00, and I want to thank the LA Library for allowing us to keep the library open from 7:00 to 9:00 on a Tuesday night. And the first one will be an overview, and that will be held by Am Siti Pak Abun, which is. Kathy LeFleur especially for making sure her children in her class entered. It was really fun and really a lot of participation. So 58 years, and that was kind of a busy time. I want to thank you for participating and for everybody who showed up. Now I'm a librarian. Okay. The Friends of the Library have won another grant. It's a matching grant. And what we're doing this time is providing mini iPads for six different lectures that we're having that have to do with digital use of the library. You know, right now you can go to the library and get Wi-Fi any area in the library. All you have to do is go into the library and get the number. And it is constant in that area. Until we get the whole city Wi-Fied, that's a good place to go. And we're responsible for doing that. And now, in conjunction with that, we want to teach people how to use their digital devices to do everything related to the library. So in light of that, we are giving one of these mini iPads each time. So six of these will be given one at a time for six weeks. The first one is October 11th from 7:00 to 9:00. And I want to thank the LA Library for allowing us to keep the library open from 7:00 to 9:00 on a Tuesday night. And the first one will be an overview. And that will be held by Am Cidipakabun, which is a temporary librarian who will be here again. The next one will be November 8th. And that will have to do with eBooks. The one after that is December 13th. And that's audiobooks. The next one is January 10th. And that has to do with music. You can download all kinds of music, as well as magazines, books, all kinds of things from the library, just like that, if you know how, which I don't. So I hope I win one of those things. February 14th, which is Valentine's Day, come to the lecture from 7:00 to 9:00, win an iPad and your sweetheart will be so impressed. March 14th is the last one. And that has to do with software. And again, these are all digital. And at each one at the end, we will pull a name and someone will get a brand-new mini iPad. It's really worth a lot of money. The next thing we are doing in conjunction with our, our view that health and keeping people on the island healthy is a good thing for all of us. And in conjunction with the hospital and with other health facilities here, we are having a series of doctors who will talk about their specialties. And our first doctor will be November, October 6th. These will be on Thursdays. And again, the library is helping us by leaving the library open and having a librarian there for us from 7:00 to 9:00. The first one is October 6th. And that is, that is Dr. Amy Warren. And she will talk about women's issues. If you have any questions regarding women's, women's issues, please come to this. It'll be very informal, very informative, and she will answer questions. The next one will be November 3rd, then December 1st, then January 5th, February 2nd, and March 2nd. And all of these will be in both newspapers. So if you can't remember this real quick, cut it out, put it on your refrigerator and hope to see you. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very informative. Anyone else?
This is Allison.
Hi, Allison Osinski, 356 Sumner. Couple things. One directed at our city manager. Any movement on the status of setting up a meeting, a joint meeting with the city, the island company, and the pool committee to discuss pool issues?
I see a representative of the island company here. And I'm here. And I'm sure that we can, we can certainly do that. If that's delightful. I see that in some plans that the hospital is talking about, and I yet have not had that opportunity to visit with our friends up here, that there's some discussion about that. I don't know where that fits.
We know they're interested in being part of it and having a therapy pool as part of the complex.
No, I, I'm certainly happy to do that. And I'm sure our friends at the company would be interested in listening and talking with us about that.
Okay. Since, you know, we had a discussion about this about two months ago. And I'd just like to see this move forward. So this is not another discussion we're having two years from now about when are we going to set up that meeting?
Well, I think, I think at that discussion, we talked about the concepts. And you had some very detailed information, more than I've ever seen on, and you also mentioned the fact that you had money that had been raised over time for development of a pool. Very unusual also for people who are proponents. And that's to your credit. And so certainly the people with the land are those people who you've mentioned. And we, we would be happy to have that conversation.
All right. Thank you. Second item, just wondering what's up with the construction of the kayak racks?
I saw them today.
You saw them today?
They're looking good.
Okay. Are they going to wind up on the beach somewhere, maybe next to those new outriggers we're going to have?
I don't know where they're going. But I, Phil Herna, I was up there today and Philip, Phil Hernandez says they're just about done.
Good. Because I know he did come and talk about measurements and all. I just wondered, again, what happened to that?
Yeah. He showed me where they're stacking and all.
Good. Okay. And something that was brought up just briefly about a few minutes ago, but I've asked this before. But also, what's the status in looking into having city, citywide Wi-Fi? Instead of all of us paying 30 or 40 dollars a month for Wi-Fi, why can't we have the City of Avalon have Wi-Fi? Big Bear's had it for 10 years. Every house in the entire community has free Wi-Fi. You know, the marina where I keep my boat part of the year is larger than the City of Avalon and has free Wi-Fi. Could somebody please look into this to see? I mean, this would be something that would benefit everybody in the community. And there's got to be a way to set it up so it works everywhere, not just at the library or outside a couple restaurants.
Wonder what, what that would take to do that. If Pat was here, he might be able to explain that to us. But it's either that or somebody, is a good opportunity for someone to start a business there.
Yeah, I don't know.
Madam Mayor, I know that there's a lot of, that there's a lot of literature through the League of California Cities and the National League of Cities on cities that have done that. Many in California have done that. And we can pull that information down. And there's, I, and I believe recently that I read an article, there are, there are advantages and there are some disadvantages. But we would, I think, want to do more research. And if that's something you want to do.
I think it's worth, thank you, Allison.
Worth looking into.
Yes.
Okay. I can, and I'll just tell you, I can provide city manager with information. The City of Los Angeles has hired our firm as part of a project to put Wi-Fi throughout the entire city. It's, yeah, it's, it's a substantial undertaking because they're going to, it's going to be free and it's going to, the city's going to pay for it.
Wow.
So.
No free lunches.
No free lunch, no.
Honorable Mayor Marshall and City Council members, I'm Bob Messer. I'm here on behalf of St. Catherine's Church and the Los Angeles Archdiocese. I have an exciting community announcement. The official replica of the tilma of Our Lady of Guadalupe from the Basilica in Mexico City is touring around the North American Catholic churches that are specially designated as the Jubilee Year of Mercy Church. And St. Catherine's Church here on the island is one of those churches. Next Tuesday, Bishop Solis from the San Pedro region of the Los Angeles Archdiocese and a few other people will be coming over with the replica. And it will be at our, the Catholic Church here at about 4 o'clock PM on Tuesday, September 27th. There'll be a procession from the church to Bird Park and back. It'll be similar to the December Our Lady of Guadalupe procession that, that you're probably familiar with. I just wanted to make sure that the word gets out. It's, the planning has been very last minute and not everybody might know about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. All righty. We're going to the consent calendar.
Mayor and council, there are a number of items on consent. Item number one is to approve minutes from the September 6th, 2016 regular city council meeting. You have item number two, are the expenditures submitted for approval and warrants in the amount of 1,535,0023688. You have two payrolls in the amount of 467,113.48. You have electronic transfers totaling 163,492.25. We have item three is a community digital signage at Von's supermarket. Their recommendation is to approve community services department to continue to administer the community digital signage at the Von's supermarket. Item number four is contract, temporary help. The city council has approved in its budget $8,000 for payroll for, for a senior accountant. That position has not yet been recruited. The finance director and I agree that they need help now. So it is recommended that the city manager be authorized to contract temporary accounting help to assist the finance director with monthly accounting tasks and with the preparation of the FY 1516 audit until the senior accountant position is filled. We encourage people who are interested, might be interested in this position to contact the City of Avalon. We would like to see local people apply for that who are qualified. We have item number five. I'm pleased to say that we have city leases held by the Santa Catalina Island Company. In November of 2014, the Santa Catalina Island Company presented the city with proposals for lease agreements on properties that the city occupied or maintained for community benefit. Since January of 2016, the city and the company have started to earnestly negotiate these agreements through, through mutual, mutual efforts principally on our staff by Denise Ratty and, and by, by actions with Mr. Wilhelm and Allison Northrup on their side. We have come to what we believe is, is a good agreements based on where we are today. The city does not have land. So the city is not in, unlike most cities in California, we don't have land. So for us to operate programs or, or provide services, we have to, we have to lease property from property owners who should expect a reasonable return on their investment. And so we're asking the city council to authorize the city manager to enter into lease agreements on the listed properties that you have and approve expenditures from the 1516 and 1617 budget to reflect the accurate expenditures. I will say that the company has been most patient with us as this item goes back over a year. And we are appreciative of their patience. And we're anxious to move forward. In the time that we have in the new leases, we will, we can always examine other options. You have also on consent for this acting as a successor agency, we have amended recognized obligation payment schedule, ROPS 16-17B. The action is adopt a resolution of the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency approving an amended recognized obligation payment schedule 16-17B. And that concludes, Madam Mayor, the consent calendar items.
And on items number, item number five, council member Hernandez and Cassidy will be recusing themselves on those two items due to income from the island company. If those items are not pulled, they can remain at the diocese. If they're pulled, they have to leave. But they can, so.
I'd like to pull five.
I just have a quick question on number four, but I don't want to pull it. Does this 8,000 a month include housing? Or are we going to have to provide housing for?
The budgeted amount of 8,000 is the base salary of 63,000 plus our normal benefits, not including housing.
So if we were to contract out from over town, we would have to provide housing as well?
If they, if they stayed overnight, correct. Yes.
Okay.
And that, that 8,000 would be included for the budget? That, that would cover?
Oh, that's what I'm asking. That covers the housing. It's not.
That would be all expenses.
Not in addition to that. That was my, okay. Perfect. I will, if no other conversation, I will make a motion to approve consent items one, two, three, four, and six.
Second.
Move a second. Further comment? Comment from the community? Call for the vote. Whoops.
Allison Osinski again. This is in relation to number three, the Von's supermarket sign. Large majority of people in town don't know we have that because no one can see it. It's up too high. So could I ask that it continue, but maybe be relocated where people actually see it and know it's there?
If Von's can accommodate that, but I'd, perhaps.
You mean the monitor in Von's?
Yes, above the door.
Yeah. I don't know where else we could put it.
We, we can certainly check into the matter and see what we can do.
Right. I'm usually talking so much I don't, anyway, we have.
Item.
Motion and a second.
We need votes.
We already voted on it.
I haven't voted on it.
Oh, you didn't?
No.
No, I'm sorry. I thought you did.
Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay. See you later. Okay. Item number five. Councilmember Sampson?
Yes. Riley's Pond, up at Joe Machado Field. What, what do we, what do we use that area? It's an easement around Joe Machado. So we can have access to what? I mean, what do we use that for?
Ms. Ratty would.
Actually, Joe, when we expanded the Joe Machado Field, we encroached up in that area. And.
Oh, I see. Okay. So we're paying for it because we, we're there. We kind of.
We are, we're not paying anything on Riley's Pond.
We're not? Okay.
Nope.
All right. Another item is the fuel dock. I've asked both of you gentlemen.
$1.
About a deed to that property. And you, none, neither of you have gotten back to me on that.
Let me, let me update you, council member. And thank you.
The reason I'm asking is because I've had multiple constituents of mine ask me, like, are, are we paying for something that we actually is ours?
Yes, sir.
I don't know. It's, it was a high-tide line question?
Yes, sir.
I mean, high-tide line question. So that's why I'm asking.
And, and I appreciate the question. Thank you for asking. Let me, let me say that that discussion of where the property line is on the high-tide line has been a subject that we have spoken with the company about, with their representatives. I will tell you as well that I've spoken with the State Lands Commission, who is overall the manager of state lands, of which we are trustees in Avalon Bay, one of the only cities that really kind of does, manages it on their own that, in California. And they have sent us maps that date back to the 40s and 60s on which there are, are survey points from which the maps were made, which to show property lines. The Director of Public Works, we will, we will be doing a survey to determine the exact property line of, for that. We've mentioned that to the, to our, to the company. And should there need to be any adjustments, we hope in our favor that, that I'm sure that those adjustments would be made. So we have not dropped that issue. That issue is current. The, a survey is something that we will have to bring in a, a surveyor over. And, and that's, maybe Mr. Jake, with your permission, Madam Mayor. Mr. Jake can discuss that.
Good evening. I was on the phone with the surveying company today. They should be hitting the island within a week.
Oh, they're going to come to the island?
Yes, they are.
And they're going to lay that out and?
They're going to do some survey over there. We're still lacking some information. We're trying to get some right-of-way indeed information. But we're, we're doing some investigation. And hopefully within a week, we'll have it.
Okay. I appreciate if you, you keep me up on that issue.
Yes, sir.
Because I have asked you both. And you didn't get back to me before this item was on the agenda. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I make a motion to approve item number five.
Second.
Move the second. Comments? Call for the vote.
Three ayes and two abstentions, Councilmember Cassidy and Councilmember Hernandez.
Do we want to do the hospital? Or do we want to go into general business?
Well, let's do, no, will, is, is somebody here from the hospital? Okay.
Yes, the boss is here.
I don't know anything about it. I don't know anything about it. Oh, okay. Can we skip around?
I don't care.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's your pleasure, Madam Mayor.
Okay, let's skip around.
You may have to convene the meeting of the hospital.
I hereby call to order the Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meeting.
Okay, general business. We're back.
All right. Jordan? We go to the first page? Okay. All right. So this item is a, a report from our office on water options and an update. To give you some background, at the meeting when Sean Hagerty discussed residential DSOL units, the council, after that was discussed, and it was revealed that the regulators would not allow us to do the full-scale residential DSOL, council tasked our firm with looking at other water options in terms of what could we come up with to assist with water. Just a little background on our firm, we represent over 100 water agencies. We're currently representing Santa Barbara in a desolination plant. And we've probably done 30 or 40. done 30 or 40 storage and pipeline projects, as well as several reclaimed water. We were also tasked with looking, so what we did is, not only did we investigate what we have available in Avalon, we pursued state funding options, we've talked with the state people, the, the state Office of Department of Water Resources that has funding available for state water projects. We've also had two meetings with Edison, and the city manager has also have discussed briefly with the island company potential issues with respect to location of various infrastructure on their property. So one of the things that we did when we started to look at this was we wanted to set some policy considerations. So policy number one was we wanted to eliminate water restrictions. In other words, we want to alleviate the drought restrictions that are currently placed on the city. What was the best way to do that? Number two, we wanted to propose a long-term reliable water solution. In other words, something that can not be just for one year, or two years, or three years, but, you know, 30 years out. We wanted to evaluate and come up with proposals for a short-term solution for the current situation where you have restrictions in place. We wanted to propose solutions that have regulatory support, and this is important because there are certain things that are out there that may require you to jump through 10 different regulatory steps. The shortest path, and one that has regulatory support, in other words, the state of California has to approve some of the things that we'd like to do. What would they like to see? What would they, what are they willing to approve? What are they willing to work for? And so we've talked with the Department of Water Resources about those. And so our proposals include what we believe the state of California will support. We wanted to minimize the cost to ratepayers while maximizing water production, get the biggest bang for the buck for the city in terms of what we can do with respect to developing water resources, but minimize the cost to the ratepayers. We wanted to position the city and Edison in the position to get grant success. There are a number of water grants out there that have been passed by the voters and the legislature in the recent years, and they're still working on some regs for them, but we want to propose a solution, or a series of solutions, that we believe will be eligible for those grants. And so there are grants out there for storage, there's grants out there for wastewater, and there's a sizable new grant out there for desalination. And so in our consideration of what we're recommending, we want, we looked at what the money out there from the state is. And this is important because the more money we get from the state, the more money, less money potentially people of Avalon have to pay. Lastly, we were looking for a solution for the city of Avalon. We're the city attorney of Avalon, and so we focused our efforts on the city of Avalon. What we did in, when we put this all together is we worked with several people in our office and engineering company, Corolla, to evaluate what the best solutions are, and we did that before we discussed with Edison, because we wanted to not be influenced by Edison, we wanted to come up with what we thought were good solutions, and then we met with Edison. We've had several meetings with Edison, and I could say that those meetings, we, we have general agreement on many things, and some areas of difference on a few, but generally I think it's fair to say that, and with the big picture, that we are on board with most of the things that I'll be discussing today. So that's what we considered in terms of looking at this task, and remember, this was a task that, that you put on our office, and so we tackled this. So let's go into a little bit of background, which is important to understand where we came out, with how we came out. Most important thing is Edison owns the water system, and they own the water system for delivery of potable water to the residents of Avalon, and they're a Public Utility Commission regulated water system, which is actually beneficial to the extent that some of the regulatory hurdles that we have to pass, you don't have to pass if you're a PUC-regulated utility. So there are certain things that, for instance, going through Fish and Game, the California Department of Fish and Game, you, you really go through the PUC, you don't have to take a separate step through Fish and Game. So that is a benefit of having a PUC-regulated utility. Edison serves a population of about 4,200 people in Avalon through 18, about 19, 100 active connections, and there are two more, or, excuse me, 200 more active connections around the island. So basically Edison is serving, 90% of Edison's service is for Avalon residents, and that's an important consideration in looking at what our recommendations are, because 90% of the people on the island live in Avalon, those projects that benefit Avalon residents should have a priority just by sheer fact of, of the numbers. So we'll go more into background. Edison's system has wells, reservoirs, storage tanks, a desalination facility, 25 miles of pipeline, and related infrastructure, which includes a lot of pumping to get the water, to move the water around. The potable groundwater wells and main reservoirs are located outside of the city boundary. When, what that means is that the city of Avalon does not have regulatory authority over those wells and reservoirs outside the city of Avalon. We can only regulate and impose anything we want to do on things within the city of Avalon. And lastly, there's a desalination facility that is owned by Edison. Unit two was recently added with the city's financial help of $500,000. This is, everyone's probably seen this, this is a map of Edison's potable water system. Okay, let's talk about the city of Avalon and some key facts. Again, this is all background, so you can understand where we're, where, where our recommendations are coming from. The city currently does not own any of the potable water infrastructure. The wells, the desalination plant, the piping, and the pumps are owned by Edison. The city does not have control over water rights exercised by Edison. In other words, the way California law is, is the person that owns the property and either has permission from the landowner, or owns the property itself and pulls the water out, they own the water. So it's, it's an, it's a acquisitive water rights in California. In other words, if you pump it, you own it. If it's on your property, you pump it, you own it. If it's on someone else's property, if they've given you permission to pump it, then if you pump it, you own it. So Edison owns the water rights. It does not mean that Avalon does not have the ability as a public entity to regulate entitlements in, in the city independently of those water rights. As we discussed about a month ago, we have regulatory power in terms of our entitlements when we're granting entitlements to look at, is there sufficient water, even if Edison would say there would be, to permit develop? So you do have the power through your growth management ordinance and through an ordinance that may be developed, or that will be developed further, to actually regulate your entitlements. Another important thing is that the city owns and operates a saltwater wastewater system that's used for toilet, urinal flushing, and street washdown. This saltwater system conserves fresh water, but we have maintenance challenges that must be mitigated, and in particular, because it's saltwater, when it is in the pipes going to homes, the salt corrodes it, those pipes, and then when the waste enters into the sewer system, because it's saltwater, it's very corrosive and tends to eat through the wastewater system. And so, you know, there is a cost associated with having that saltwater system. Yes, we save potable water, but it, it is more expensive because the saltwater itself is corrosive. Some interesting facts here, we got these from Edison when we were doing our evaluation of the city's obligation to pay the $500,000 for the second D-Sol unit. In 2013, the average water use was 337 per day, the highest month, which was July, was 477. Obviously, that's the summertime. You can see in 2014, the citizens and residents of Avalon started really conserving, it was down in both categories. I don't have 2015 figures, but I am informed, or I believe that they are still going lower. And I think in 2016, the last month, we were around the mid 200s for, for the summer, which shows you that, you know, citizens have really, citizens and businesses have done a great job in conserving. Something that will be of importance later, when I talk about the reclaimed water, is our saltwater use is for toilets and fire, 390,000 gallons per day. So if you look at the potable water usage, the potable water usage is less than the saltwater usage. Most of the water that we're using each day is saltwater. Okay, the city of Avalon has been obviously impacted by a severe and prolonged drought. We are now in stage three, and that's pursuant to an Edison tariff that is based upon levels of middle ranch reservoir. And that is important later on for one of our recommendations, and as council has indicated, the city is committed to doing everything it can to improve freshwater situation. What have we done to date? The citizens and businesses have really done an outstanding job in conserving water. Your numbers are well down, you're 40 to 50% down from what you were, even when you were conserving already, and so this, everyone on this island is to be commended for the tremendous amount of conservation that you've done. The city has also paid $500,000 for a second desalination unit. It didn't need to, but we did in the spirit of cooperation, and we're also working with the County of Los Angeles to get another $500,000. So through the city's efforts, working with Edison, that's a million dollars that goes for the cost of that second D-Sol unit, which will reduce any money that could be passed along through any, through, to any citizens or businesses in Avalon. The city has also offered cooperation in terms of going forward, in terms of land, cooperation of resources, knowledge that we have. In our view, the city has done a lot, and now it's time for this, for Edison and the city to work together. So given all of that, we now have what our recommendations are. And these are our recommendations, and it's obviously it's the council's view to consider the recommendations and direct staff accordingly. So recommendation number one is that the city continue to work with Edison to increase the amount of water produced by the desalination facility. So we produced, we, we, we spent $500,000 to pay for the addition of unit number two. What we're asking, we need Edison to work, to work with Edison because they own the desalination plant. So what do we specifically mean by the desalination plant? There are five specific things that come up on our schedule. The first three are critical, and so in terms of prioritizing where the money is and what we think we can do for the bang for the buck. The first is to rehabilitate and maintain the current wells. There's a report by an engineer that is attached to the, that is available online. It was available when we did the review of the $500,000. It's from Corolla, and that was based upon evidence that they gathered from Edison, also just from doing some research. And the current wells have been rehabbed, but they're not as efficient as they were in the past, and we'd like to make, and we also need to make certain that they are maintaining because our D, the D-Sol system in Avalon uses wells for taking water into the system, and that's really important. Most desalination plants have a tube out into the ocean that sucks water into the system, and that is heavily regulated because when you suck the water into the system, the fish and the wildlife are all impacted by that. Our system is based upon wells that don't have the impact on wildlife that other types of desalination plants have. What that means is, is when we talk with regulators, regulators like Avalon's D-Sol system, if it's based on wells, because we're not impacting Fish and Game as much as we are with other types of technology. So the well system is a fantastic system, it helps us be eligible, or it would help us overcome regulatory hurdles for expanding the well. So we got to rehabilitate, number two. We need to add seawater wells to maximize the cap, the capacity. As I will discuss later, I'll go two slides ahead. Here are some interesting figures. Desalination unit number one, the original one, that's about 201,000 gallons a day. Desalination number, wells number one and two in brine mode. Now what that means is, is that the desalination plant number one produces the water, and the waste that it comes out from that doesn't go in the ocean like it used to. It goes into unit number two, which further rings out the water, and that plant pursuant to the specs can produce 321,000 gallons a day of freshwater. If desalination units number one and two would operate separately, in other words, both taking in seawater, you could have 432 gallons of water a day if they're both operating. And if you look at 2014, the highest monthly average, which was in the summer, was 400,000. So when you look at this report, if both plants are operating in seawater mode, you have enough water to meet the highest daily month average two years ago. So we believe that's a significant finding and something that really drove our conclusion. So again, number two, and, and the reason that we can't achieve that capacity right now is because when you look at the current wells, there's not enough saltwater available from the current wells to operate both units side by side. So we need more wells so that both units can be run independently. If that happens, then again, there's a lot of potable water that you can get. The third thing is additional storage and related infrastructure for the increased capacity. So assuming that you've got more capacity for production of potable water, if you can store it, you can save it for a rainy day. We want the biggest storage possible, we'll talk about those specifics later, but we believe that with rehabiling, rehabilitating the current wells, adding more wells to take over the capacity of the D-Sol units that are already there, you can produce extra water that not only meets the needs of Avalon in the summer, but you'll be producing some extra. And one thing also, the D-Sol plant is permitted right now for a certain discharge, okay? So when you go through the regulatory process, there's only so much bad stuff you can put back into the ocean, okay? The plant, from the information that we have, is already permitted, so that two plants operating in seawater mode still will not. in seawater mode still will not exceed what we're permitted for. In other words, we already have the ability to discharge more into the ocean than we're discharging right now, or even with the second plant. So again, when we're looking at these, we're thinking, let's eliminate regulatory barriers. What can you do? And here's a big regulatory barrier because we're not putting pollution that is above the permitted levels. Again, when we talk about the environment of what regulations we have to go through, that's a key thing. Number four is construct any other needed improvements to take full advantage of the increased capacity. This again is pumping stations and perhaps more storage. And then lastly, in terms of the desalination projects, adding infrastructure to if we could cost effectively move D-Sol water to Hamilton Cove if it's financially feasible and grant eligible, or it's possible that there could be an assessment district formed by the people in Hamilton Cove to pay for this. In terms of our specific projects, that doesn't rate as high as others because there's not that many people out there. And to put that line out there would be over a million dollars. And that's just to put the line out that doesn't cover pumping costs. That's not a project that is high on the list, but it's something that, obviously, if there's a lot of money out there, we could support. So what we want to do with D-Sol is we want to obtain Edison's approval to move forward, or if they're, if they just balk, to seek PUC help to encourage cooperation. We can tell you that in our meetings with Edison, they are on board with the two-well process. They are in support of that. And that's a big thing that we were happy to see. The next thing we want to do is working with Edison. We want to secure state and federal grant funds for D-Sol projects. Again, when looking at our priorities and what we determined, we wanted to minimize the cost to the city of Avalon residents and businesses. And so recently, the state legislature has passed a series of bonds specifically designed for D-Sol. And so there are millions and millions of dollars out there for D-Sol. What's also important is that there are not that many cities competing for those dollars. So not only are there money out there for D-Sol, but you have to look at the game because it's all a game. Are you going to be able to get the money? And when we're looking right now throughout California, there's not a lot of other cities competing for those D-Sol dollars. In addition to that, in our discussions with the state on the grants, every other city in California has some way to get water. You know, if it's not within the city, you can pipe it in some way, or you can truck it in, you know, or you can put wells. Avalon's really unique in that we really don't have another water source, which is why we score very, we believe that we will score very highly on those grant applications because grants, again, are competitions for money. So we are totally unique. The money is out there. We don't have a lot of competition. That's why expansion of D-Sol, rehabilitation of D-Sol, and anything affiliated with D-Sol is our number one priority, number one recommendation because the money's there. We believe it will be relatively, we still have to go through the regulatory process, but the chances of success are very good. So again, we have been in contact with the state. One thing that just happened last week, which is new, the United States Senate passed a water infrastructure bill. The vote was, it's either 94 to six or 96 to four. It has great bipartisan, bipartisan support for billions of dollars for small governments for water systems, including D-Sol. And so that is just passed by the Senate. It's going to the House of Representatives in the next couple of weeks. We believe it'll be passed. And so we already have lobbyists in Washington who are meeting with Lowenthal's office tomorrow to, again, say that, hey, when these monies come available, Avalon's a perfect recipient for this. And so again, it's state and federal money that we're seeking. Doing a joint project with Edison will increase the competitiveness, competitiveness of it. The state and regulators, they like joint projects. You can have one applicant, in other words, for each grant, the state has one applicant, which means that one party's responsible for complying with all the grant terms. But you can have one applicant and you can have a joint project where you say, hey, you know, the city's going to be the applicant, but we're working with Edison. Edison's going to be the applicant, we're working with the city. And that's, puts us, we believe, in a competitive advantage for other people. The other thing that we've been working on is the disadvantaged community designation. So the grants that we're talking about and that are out there so far are matching grants, which means the city has to pay some money as well, or Edison has to pay some money as well. If we can qualify as a disadvantaged community, the amount of payment that either Edison or anyone else has to pay goes significantly down because the whole purpose of that program is this is a community that cannot support huge rates, rate hikes for this, and so you can get more grant money. And so that's work that Audra has been working on to make, to make certain that we qualify for that. And I think we'll have an update at the next meeting. The other thing the city can do is, is we need to determine our specific role in the D-Sol projects. Obviously, Edison owns the plant, so they're going to be the lead agency. But working with them, again, we think we can really increase our ability, working together, to get the state money. And everyone wants to get state money. In terms of ownership of improvements, the state grant, it will, whatever the state requires in terms of getting those monies, if we're talking with the state and they say you can be grant eligible better, for instance, if the city owns the storage tank versus Edison, we're willing to work with Edison on that. So we're really worrying, willing to work and to work with the system that, again, makes certain that the most money we get is free money from the state. So again, this is the Corolla report. It shows that if you put both units together, we can take care of the needs of Avalon. There are challenges with D-Sol. We can't underestimate them. There is expensive operational costs, but those operational costs are only when the groundwater from the wells up by Middle Ranch are insufficient. Obviously, if the Middle Ranch reservoir is full, that's much less expensive than D-Sol, and we fully expect that water to be used. Again, working with the D-Sol plant to make certain that the levels don't fall to where we're in a drought again. But again, this is, you know, the D-Sol is for when the Middle Ranch wells are not full. Currently, state grant funds may not use, may not be used for ongoing operations and maintenance, which means we can build it. But in terms of the operation of it, that's going to have to come from Edison, who has the ability under the state law to seek the reasonable cost of doing it from the people using the water. We are engaged in conversations with the federal, with Feinstein's office, because she'll be around, to see if there's any way we can get money for operation and maintenance because that would be, that would be even, that would be great because that's ongoing cost. But right now, it's only available for the construction, but we are trying to get some legislation or some grant money to cover operation and, and maintenance.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but that was the one of, that was like on the top of the list as well. When you gave what we wanted to do, that operations was, so that's one of the first things we want to do, but the least, but the least funds would be, or no funds would be available for that.
Well, funds are available for building the D-Sol.
No, I get that. But when you, that first slide about what your priorities were, one, it was, it was maintenance and operation.
Well, no, the first priority is, is rehabbing the wells, which is a capital project so that, so that they can, and then...
The second one was?
Second one was building, a second set of wells. So there's, there is rehabilitation and maintenance to, and by maintenance, we're talking about rehabilitating the current well so that they can produce the maximum water. That's, that's the easiest, because we really don't need a lot of permits for that. Number two is second wells, that are going to be brand new wells, that, again, that's all capital cost to build, so the state will help us with those two things.
Oh, see, okay.
Okay.
I understood the first, because you called it maintenance and refurbishing, and you're saying...
Refurbishing is eligible for grants.
Different than ongoing operation.
Mayor, could I just mention, just Scott, may I just mention that while there are cost differentials when you're using desalinization, Scott has said that it's only in those times when we don't have rain and we don't have adequate groundwater supply. We do not believe that there's adequate groundwater supply, and certainly, at least in recent times, there's not enough rain. So it, so that only kicks in when, when, when the desalinization, those added costs. And as business owners and property owners know, what is the cost of not having adequate water or being on rationing as we are, and that is also a cost that has to be factored in.
Okay. The other thing is, again, these things are costly to build, but not as costly as, because of the fact that the second D-Sol unit is already there, we're really just talking about the wells and the pipelines and the pumps to bring the water to the existing D-Sol plant.
What about discharge?
Discharge, discharge is going to be the same because it's going to go out the same areas. It's both D-Sol units right now are set to separately discharge into the ocean, okay?
One discharges, the first, the first desalination unit discharges into the second one, correct?
Not all the time. Not all the time. It can also go right out. It's got a bypass.
So we don't have to worry about discharge permits?
No, because, because the, because the discharge permit that we've already been permitted for exceeds the stuff that would be going out if one and two are operational. Now, we will have to do some tests to make certain that when both are operating separately, there's not some other thing that maybe violates some other law that's not on the discharge, like in terms of the water quality. But we believe that the majority of the work and the, and the big hurdle was getting that discharge permit, and we're within the parameters of the discharge permit already, which is, again, why this is our number one solution because of the fact that we're already permitted for a lot of this. What we need to get more permits for are the wells. And that's going to be Coastal Commission, that's going to be the Department of Water Resources, and the PUC. Because it's a PUC regulated utility, we will notice fishing game, but our PUC people say that we don't really have to go separately through fishing game. Again, cutting down the regulatory burdens. Again, it's, the bulk of the work in terms of what we believe is the heavy lift has already been done, the wells, the wells and infrastructure, they will cost something, but we can get a lot of that money from the state. So that's with respect to the actual D-Sol units themselves. And I can, I can say, and I know Edison is here, they're in general agreement with us that those two things need to be done. So let's go to the storage component. The second thing in terms of, now, we have more water because it's being produced more efficiently, is storage. And you make more water, and as I've already indicated, if both units are running side by side, knowing that, for instance, you know, you have your shoulder year during, or your shoulder season, where at some point you, you're going to be able to take some of those units offline and, you know, maintain them and stuff. But for the most part, if you have two units running, you're going to have excess storage ability. So you're going to have more water that you can use, and we want to store it. And we want to store it for if one of the D-Sol units breaks down, if, if it looks like the ranch, the Middle Ranch reservoir is falling again, and you can use alternate water. So we want to have as much storage as possible. So we want to make certain that, again, as I said here, we're building additional storage facilities for potable water that minimizes the risk of environmental contamination, eliminates evaporation, and creates a secure source for fresh water, no matter whether it rains or not. Again, we have to work with Edison because they are the water provider. So the options include insisting Edison with the cost of new storage, that's like state grants. Secondly is, we can construct new storage ourselves in agreement with Edison. In other words, we could own property and Edison could help us build it. We'd use their money or the state money. Everything requires Edison to work with us in a, in a partnership. Up to this point, I think Edison's in agreement with us. I think we both agree that we have, that there is a need for more storage for the water that is produced by D-Sol in the circumstances when you're in a drought situation, you don't have Middle Ranch. Where we somewhat depart is now, our number one recommendation for a storage facility is a large storage facility, a million, a million and a half, 2 million gallons in the Pebley Beach Road area. So that, and it would be a covered concrete or steel container of, of that water. And that's important because if you build a 2 million gallon storage tank, and it's during the summer, and you're using 400 a day, that's five days of water that gets you through any weekend or, or any bad thing if both D-Sol units go down. Other storage facilities, if they're smaller, like one that may be proposed that's, that's 200,000 gallons, that's a half day during the summer. And so the question is, when you've got money to spend and storage is available, storage grants are available, we, our recommendation is to go for the biggest bang for the buck and to build a storage facility that can store several days of water, and the grants are there. And storage, once a tank is built, the maintenance costs are significantly, well, they are not significant. And what we're looking at is either a concrete or steel that will last 30 to 50 years, and so it's a one-time expenditure upfront, and then the maintenance is lessened throughout the year, and you've got that money right there, and the, or the tank right there. And the reason we want, we would prefer to have it in the Pebley Beach area is because one of the largest components of cost of water, besides the cleaning of it, which you're going to have regardless, is the transportation of water. The transportation of water in terms of building pipelines, maintaining the pipelines, maintaining the pumps, and using the electricity is very, very expensive, especially if you have hills and you have to go up, up things. And so in the Pebley Beach area, there are large areas of land that are, we believe, are suitable for storage facilities, and so we'd like to pursue them with the stakeholders in the area because we, again, we believe that that gets us the biggest bang for the buck. Storage facilities that are farther away are more costly and inefficient, and we also have to go through more regulatory burdens. If they're in that general area, it's Coastal Commission and the city of Avalon, that's it. If they're elsewhere on the island, you have to go, if they're out of the city, you have to go to the county, if they're on conservancy property, you have a whole other aspect of regulation you have to go to. And so it's our recommendation that we should focus on storage facilities near where the D-Sol plant is and where the water's being produced. In order to do this, we need to reach a consensus with Edison over the best storage projects or... or, you know, try and gain their cooperation by other needs. We're going to need new storage anyway because they're going to be building, they've already got the second unit there. We need storage to accommodate the expanded desalination plant, so storage is our second option. So these are our two major infrastructure recommendations that we have. Now, it doesn't mean that we're not, I'm going to talk about some others now. Doesn't mean that we are saying that if there were storage facilities elsewhere, we are against it, but in terms of costing it out and talking with the engineers and talking with Public Works Director, the cost of moving the water away from that area is significantly more expensive than keeping it in that area. And so, and again, the majority of residents and businesses are served by the existing D-Sol plant, and so that's why, again, looking for what's going to have the biggest impact on people, that's what our priority would be. Again, these are just recommendations. I'm going to go through some other projects now.
Before you move on, can I just ask, I'm confused on one point. Can we actually store treated water? Can we store desalinated water?
Yes.
It has to be circulated, though, right?
There can be a mixer, yeah.
Okay, okay.
But it can be done. It can be done because you're always going to have water, most, I mean, D-Sol plants work during the day, and then at night, they continue to produce and water uses goes down, and they're stored in tanks. And that's wherever there are D-Sol plants, that's just the technology. And so, yes, you can store it. So there are some other projects that did not reach, and these are infrastructure projects that were not as high in our view in terms of what we can do and what we should be pursuing because you only have limited dollars out there. And again, most of the dollars out there are now for D-Sol, and we can have storage linked to D-Sol and get a big bang for the buck. Some things that we don't think as a city make sense for the city to support in terms of throwing its weight and capital and regulatory ability or working with the state are new groundwater wells. You could provide support for development of new potable water wells, and Edison is pursuing those in Avalon Canyon. This may be a good resource option, but it's not the total answer, and in fact, when you look at the water to be produced by those wells, it's a drop in the bucket compared to having D-Sol full-time. And so the cost of doing that is not a project that we would recommend spending any city resources on or emotional capital on.
Mayor, just on the point about the wells in the canyon, I think we think that this is great, that that resource is being developed as a component of a total water system. And to the credit to the company and to Edison that's working with them, this is another piece of a total solution, but I don't think anyone would say it's a total solution, as Scott has alluded to.
I don't think it's that great of an idea because they're taking half the water. They want half of the water.
Yeah, yes, and those are the details that have to be, and they'll have to work with us on those details, sir.
It's a very...
And again...
...way to exploit that water. That's why I had mentioned that maybe we should just drill our own wells then. That way the water goes, all the water goes to Edison, not just half of it, and then we won't have to, you know, deal with the fact that we're going to have half as much water as we would if we drilled our own wells.
And then that's the next point, is development of the city's own groundwater wells. That is a potential project that the city can do. Drilling wells is expensive. The water that would be produced on city property, so we don't own a lot of property, and the water that would be produced from that is not sufficient in quality, that we believe that you should spend a million or so dollars pursuing groundwater wells. Your biggest bank for the buck is elsewhere, so we're not recommending that. This one's going to get a little complex, so bear with me on this one. A lot of people have talked about recycled water, and recycled water in the abstract is a fantastic idea and something that in the long term, if things work out, you will see that in many years from now, it could be a really great solution, and I'm going to explain why. So recycled water, the concept there is to, can we explore opportunities to develop and produce more recycled water? And what we're really talking about is converting wastewater because you use recycled water, you get it from the wastewater facility. Can you convert that into water that is tertiary water? That means water that can be used as non-potable, but can be used for other purposes. And the principal use of that in a perfect world would be to use the recycled water in the wastewater system. Are there state legislation that was passed years ago that allows recycled water to be put in water that is currently used and occupied by the saltwater system? So there's state law out there that allows this. It was passed especially for Avalon, and our ordinance allows that. So legally speaking, we've taken the steps to be able to do this. Once you, there's a lot of permitting process if we were to develop this, but we've taken the steps to do that. The other things you can use recycled water for are outdoor irrigation or indirect potable reuse. What indirect potable reuse is, is taking that water, cleaning it up even more, and then mixing that water into a reservoir that already has water in it. So San Diego is doing that right now. What they're doing is they're taking wastewater, they're cleaning it up a lot, and then they're shipping it into a reservoir and then mixing it with water in the reservoir, and then eventually that then goes right into, for a potable water. This is an incredibly controversial and very expensive thing. We would not recommend that you pursue this. And the issue with outdoor irrigation is, yes, you can use water irrigated, I mean, recycled water for outdoor irrigation, but you have to put in separate pipes for that. They're purple pipes. And so it's very difficult and very costly to use recycled water for landscaping because you've got to put in a separate landscaping system. So we did this in Lake Arrowhead, and it cost for 150 acre-feet a year, it cost about $7 million to do, and we had state funding from it. And we had already had a plant that was close to being already set up for that. So your plant's not, and so it would be very, very expensive. But it's something that there is money out there for, but we're going to talk about what the problem with this is. The city would own, the city owns the water that it produces. So we produce water from reclaimed water. We own that water. We can do whatever, it's our water. Now, any use of that recycled water with Edison's potable water, we'd have to agree with Edison, but we can use it for things that we, that we use it for, which is principally wastewater. Now, here is the big problem as it currently exists with this. So right now, when we look at the wastewater treatment plant, what it gets is it gets 410,000 gallons a day of waste, and that's waste, that is, that is, that is from people using their dishwashers and sinks and also the toilet water. So it's 410 gallons, 410,000 gallons a day. So ideally, what we'd like to do is take that water, treat it, and put it back into the system for the toilets and urinals and fire. When you look at what we use for salt every day, it's 390,000 on average per day, about the same amount. I mean, you know, it's like 5% off. The problem is, is that when you process water and you put it toward a recycling level, you lose a certain percentage of it. In a plant that has a lot of water in it, you're going to lose 10% to 15% of the water. So if you take 10%, let's just say 10% out of the average treated, you're going to have less than the amount you need for saltwater and for toilets and fire because there's not enough effluent produced through that process to fully replace saltwater. There's just not enough because of process, and that's assuming that it's fresh water going into the system. We've got saltwater, so the percentage we get back is less. So totally replacing the saltwater with the recycled water based upon the current numbers will not happen because there's just not enough water being produced once you run it through. We'd still have to mix the recycled water with the saltwater. And so at this time, it's not a perfect solution. Now, what will help is more water into the system. So if, in fact, there are two D-Sol plants running, that's going to produce significantly more water going into the system, and it will make it easier to convert that because if you take that fresh water going in and then mix it and then eventually replace that saltwater with the additional water being replaced, there is the strong possibility in the future that you could completely replace the saltwater with recycled water, but you need more water going into the system. So it's kind of like we need more water going in, which is D-Sol, and then if you produce more water, then you can, it makes it easier to take, to replace the salt with the recycled water. And this is an important factor because we're going to include in any grant that we apply for, we're going to mention the fact that we have a saltwater system that's eroding and that we'd like to replace it with reclaimed water, but we need more water to do that. And so our grant will score higher in terms of the competition because it has the additional effect of, there's additional benefits to having more water because it can help the wastewater system, and the grant should score higher. Again, it's all about competition. We want to get more, the most money for Avalon. So that's the benefit. There are significant costs associated with this. The costs are, there's huge upfront cost for doing this, however, there are a lot of state money out there, and there's federal money out there for recycled water plants. So there are state and federal money available for the infrastructure to put this into place.
Scott, can I ask you a question? I learned in my workshop last week, the western water sources that supply water to many communities, like 60 communities, I think, 60 cities here in Los Angeles, they take reclaimed water and deposit it back into the ground...
Right.
And the ground naturally filters it out.
Right. It's called groundwater recharge.
Okay. Why couldn't we do that up here? That's up in the canyon here. That's one of our resources is the water that flows down this canyon. Really concerned about that being...
Because, well, first of all, the cost, you'd have to build the recycled water plant to treat the water to be able to do that first. So it's not, you're not just taking the wastewater. You're actually cleaning, further cleaning the water, and then you're putting into the system, and then it leaches into the system, and then you pull it out. So you'd have to put it far enough north so that, where the wells are or where the water sources are. If you do it close to the city, then you're going to need to do additional wells toward the city to get that water, and that's just going to be more costly. And so it's a costly, it's a costly process because you got to clean it on the back end, you got to pipe it up to where you can put it into the water, and you got to, if you can't use, you have to pipe it up all the way to Wrigley area to use the current, I'm sorry, Middle Ranch area to use the current wells, and the cost of piping that water is tremendously expensive.
This canyon, Avalon Canyon.
Well, this canyon, then you'd have to, you'd have to do a lot of environmental studies to determine if there's groundwater, and then you'd have to dig deep wells because you have to drill extra-deep to let the water filtrate into the water system.
We've budgeted money to pursue reclaimed water, and that was part of the plan, is injecting water back into the system up here.
Yes.
So if we're putting our water back into the system and then it's, it's being exploited by the island company, and Edison sells us the other half, I don't think that's a very good deal for us. I mean, if we're going to pursue reclaimed water, and we're going to be budgeting money for the reclaimed system, we got to understand that we got to use all our resources, and this is one of them.
Right.
This canyon right here...
Right.
That we're sitting in.
Our issue is the cost, excuse me, the cost of doing that is significant compared to expansion of the D-Sol plant because you get...
This is a long-term solution.
This is a long-term solution, but you need to have the water to do this, and there's significant regulatory hurdles to do this. There's also the issue that if you're depositing it on not your own property, then the issue is whose water is it, because it's usually if you're recharging the water through groundwater and it's not your property, then whoever pulls it up gets that water. So again, it's water rights in California are whoever pumps the water up.
We're sitting on water right now, right underneath us.
Right.
And we're letting it just go right out in the ocean. We're not drilling wells.
Right, right. Well, that is, again, one of the options is wells, but they are expensive, and we don't know, given the level of production that we are seeing from the wells that are just up the canyon a little bit, we don't believe that it's spending the millions of dollars to drill those wells and to go through the environmental process produces enough water to make a difference, that there are other things. Again, we're trying to prioritize, doesn't mean that all of these cannot be pursued, but we're trying to pick which one offers the biggest bang for the buck. So the thing with...
I want to, I'm letting you know, I want to protect the resources that are here underneath the City of Avalon. That's why I'm mentioning all this because I'm concerned about that. I don't want the water being taken away. I think that's the people's water underneath here, and I want them to be able to have that water if we need it. It would be a good emergency storage. I mean, that's what it is, actually. If at one point we don't come to a good conclusion about this system that you guys are working out, that we're working out, I think we should exploit it. I mean, we don't have a lot of property, but we do have some.
Again, yeah, that is one of the options. In terms of listing, it's not at the top of our list, but it is one of the options. The thing about recycled water is recycled water for the wastewater system has significant benefits because it would reduce the overall cost on the wastewater treatment area because our pipes would not be as corroded, and so, you know, it makes sense long-term if we have sufficient water. But again, at this time, converting the system would be costly and would exceed the amount of money that the state has available. So for this item here in terms of swapping out the saltwater with the reclaimed, what we'd like to do is see more reclaim, more water being generated in the system so that we can produce enough to do that. Some other, yes?
Is it okay to just take a little five-minute break?
Yes, yes, we can.
Oh, we're on anyway. Okay.
We're what?
Oh, good, good. We're live.
Are we memorex?
I don't think a lot of people know that.
I know.
And we're back. Go ahead, continue.
Okay, we have four pages left. So the next option, which is really an individual property owner thing, but we have stormwater capture and rainwater harvesting. This is for, mainly for agricultural or for people's, for groundwater recharge, but when it rains, we can have a system of stormwater channels that divert the water into the ground rather than out to the ocean, as well as individual people can have rain barrels that capture the water that they can use for various things in the house. Many communities have looked at this. You gain a little bit of water savings. It's one of the options. It's more of a individual person choice, not a citywide thing, but to the extent that they're city property, we could capture a water and use it for irrigation. We'd want to study this further. It's not something that is high on our priority list. The next one is Redding Middle Reservoir. That is a, that's one project that's been talked about. It's a way to increase the capacity of the Middle Ranch Reservoir. The value depends upon the amount of additional storage space that would be created and the actual, how many times is it actually full? Because the reservoir is not full every year and because of the cost of this are in the millions of dollars and because Edison is absolutely against this, we're not recommending this as a priority project. We believe, again, that the money should be spent in developing reservoirs closer to the city. Covering the Middle Ranch Reservoir is something that's been talked about. Other communities that have covered their reservoirs, they've mainly covered reservoirs with concrete on the bottom. There are significant environmental challenges. And the last city that did this was Newport Beach that we know of, and they ended up getting sued and spent years in court, spending a lot of money on lawyers. And so, and the amount of evaporation that would prevent, would be prevented by covering it is not a project that we should pursue given the cost and the long time permitting process. So the things I've talked about so far now are infrastructure projects. In other words, things where we can create water, store water, some other things. Now, the big one is all these things, when you're looking at them, because the grant funding is not available right away, they're writing the grants, they're writing the programs. We hope to have the grant fund applications available in November or December, but then there's an evaluation process and then once the grants are given, there's a construction project. These things are all years away. And so what we propose so far are infrastructure for long-term solutions. What is the short-term solution? Well, our short-term solution is a regulatory solution. So our short-term solution is as follows. The tariff that is based upon, that sets the drought levels and the water levels is based on the Middle Ranch Reservoir levels. These were based upon the fact that we didn't have a second desal unit or that we didn't have a desal unit perhaps working at full-time. At current use with the desal, with the Unit One and Unit Two operating in brine mode, as we've indicated earlier, it's over 300, it has the capacity of over 300,000 gallons a day. So the desalination plant production is sufficient to currently allow 100% of the desal plant used during most of the year to sustain freshwater supply. When you look at the averages of the last couple of years, if the desal plant is operating, on most days, there is sufficient water for everyone in Avalon to use, not even at level, drought level three or stage three, perhaps not even stage two, but perhaps stage one. It's our view that the regulatory restrictions are outdated and need to be changed and updated to reflect the current reality, the fact that we have a desal plant up and running and a second desal plant that's producing. So we, we would demand that the PUC rewrite the rules and the tariffs and the drought phases, levels for Avalon to reflect the capacity of the current system, which is the desal system as-is. We believe that if that were the case, that level three would be eliminated and perhaps level two would be eliminated for most of the year. There'd still be some restrictions during the summer when the, the desal plant may not be able to keep up with the daily use, but again, citizens have done such a significant job in conserving that we believe that the desal plant, if operated properly pursuant to the specifications, is enough to eliminate immediately the current phase three rationing and perhaps we can look at phase two depending on the exposed numbers. Now, the PUC has shown some flexibility with respect to extending the time that the phase three would go in because of the desal plant. We believe that we should immediately have, Edison and the city should immediately engage in conversations with the PUC to totally restructure the phased system so that we can get out of what we believe is an artificial drought situation. It's created by regulation, not by nature, because we are surrounded by water, we have the technology to produce enough water to meet the most of the needs of the city of City of Avalon year-round. And so we think that, you know, this is something that can be done much quicker than building infrastructures. If we move, if we meet with the PUC, talk to them about it, talk to them about the technology, we believe that we should be able to get them to revise the tariff and come up with a totally new system of regulation without spending money for infrastructure that can be done right now. So this is the, the immediate thing that offers relief in the short-term for Avalon while you're developing the longer-term resources.
But could, you would, would you be talking about the city of Avalon separating onto its own sort of tariff structure, which I understand, but would you include Hamilton Cove in that?
That would be part of, well, we would, if, if most of the city is on the desal plant.
Uh-huh.
And then it's, what is the production of Hamilton Cove and how does that affect the Middle Ranch Reservoir? There could be, that could be included with the city's tariff or they could have a separate tariff for those properties based upon the Middle Ranch. But for the majority of people served by the desal plant, to us, it makes no sense to have a system and a, a, a water use restriction based upon Middle Ranch, Middle Ranch Reservoir when we're not, when most of the people aren't using that water currently.
If I may, Scott, just to say, I think it goes back to an original point that you made that ideally, that there, there should be a connection with Hamilton Cove to put them on city water. As I, as I think I said, we, I think, you know, we should have been done 35 or four years ago, but some of us were here. But it was probably the choice of the developer that was rain. And that'll be dependent on whether there are grants available because what it does do in Hamilton Cove, to the extent that we can put them on city water, it relieves pressure on, on the reservoir Middle Ranch and it provides more supply to our friends in the unincorporated area. And so it has a dual benefit if there are funds available and it's economically feasible.
And so I'm not, I do not know because I don't have all the figures about the, the production in terms of what's actually used.
Yeah.
But from what we believe, that during the shoulder season, that there is enough capacity in the current desal system to more than meet the daily needs or even accelerated needs of the citizens of Avalon. And during the summer, you know, one, we're all going to hope for rain, but it makes sense that the restrictions in summer should be based upon what the, what the water, what the capacity for water production is rather than the level of lake.
Mm-hmm.
And so, so that's what, again, our immediate non-infrastructure, and frankly, it's also less costly. I mean, it's just a bunch of lawyers and people, you know, going up there and saying, "Please do this."
And that's a...
Which will make Ollie happy.
I mean, I just want to be respectful to all of those who have spoken to me from Hamilton Cove, that, that Hamilton Cove by way of its development agreement built the first desalination unit.
Right.
And so, you know, even though that they're drawing from the reservoir directly, they have created this mitigation that we already have. And so in thinking about separating the, and the tariff or putting the city of Avalon under something different, you know, even though Hamilton is still currently pulling from the reservoir, they still should be considered part of the city and the same rationing that we have.
Again, we would, we would, we would propose that if that's the council's direction and then, you know, you, and hopefully Edison would agree with us.
Tony Edison said himself that, that that was on the top of their priority list to run a pipeline over to Hamilton Cove.
Right. And again, that, that is one of our, again, when you look at the plethora of things, that is one of the options and projects that we are recommending. First, you know, it's better, let's assume that you're able to run that over and let's assume the cost is, let's say, a million and a half or let's say it's Avalon factor, two million, you still need enough desal to serve the existing city and then the additional demand that will be created by Hamilton Cove when you're pumping water over there. So again, the first thing is you got to have more desal water to serve the city and if you build the pipeline, serve Hamilton. So let's just get some reason that we can start questions. It's maximizing the desalination capacity of the existing units, which, which means more wells and rehabilitation. Expand the storage for water produced by desal so we can store it as efficiently as possible and as cheaply as possible, which we believe based upon what the engineers tell us, tell us is storage facilities in the Pebble Beach area. There may be other storage areas available, but we think that is the best. And the most important is repeal and replace the drought stages with a system based upon the production capacity of the, of the water system, not based upon the ranch level. So that, those are our recommendations. Again, these are recommendations that we've come up with. There may be other recommendations. There may be other recommendations, things that we didn't consider, but we thought we did a thorough job, given the task that the city council gave us. And so, now I'm open for questions and arrows and slings.
Middle Ranch will still be an emergency water source.
It would be actually.
Because that is our emergency water source. If something happened to the plant out here, to the system, if there was a problem, we need, we need to get water from out there.
Ideally, because it's less expensive, it's the cheapest water available, that when it's full, that you're going to operate the D-Sol plant to make certain that it's up and running. But our agreement with Edison, with respect to the construction and the money that we gave them, says that they're going to do everything to maximize and to keep the level of the middle ranch reservoir as high as possible, acknowledging, though, that it's more costly to run the D-Sol. So, again, when the reservoir is full, we, well, most of the water, if not, well, we have to have some water produced at, at the D-Sol plant to keep it up and running and to make certain that it's not mothballed, but it's going to be a different thing.
I just want to make sure we have several, multiple systems.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, we need multiple, and we need to keep working on, you know, future reclaimed, piped Hamilton Cove, I mean, all, all the above, because we can't just rely on just desalination.
I, I agree that, and that's why, because there, we need more storage to store water. When we, if we have a problem with D-Sol, we've at least stored it. And again, most of the year, you have excess capacity with the D-Sol, that's why we need more storage. You don't have enough storage right now. And again, so now it's time for questions, slings and arrows.
Before we go to the general public, I have six questions. They're not in any order, because I've been writing them as you went through. Would a 2 million gallon tank of storage meet the peak demand in July pre-Stage 2 if both D-Sol units are in operation in seawater mode?
Yes, because if it was in July, so let's go to the highest month that I have records for is 477, 477,000 gallons. So, if the D-Sol plant is producing 400 a day, that's 77, you need to draw 77,000 a day from, from, from the tank, and that is, if it's 2 million, that's a couple of weeks. So, yes.
Okay. Do, are there any costs associated with or developed with what it would be to increase the capacity or to develop the new seawater wells? Has anybody done any study on what it would actually cost?
We believe Edison has. We have talked with generally our engineer about that, and it is the cost of the wells, which depending upon where the wells are located and the pipeline, we are talking millions of dollars, but not like, not like excessive millions of dollars, and the grant funds are out there directly for that.
If the, if the city of Avalon were to declare a state of emergency, wouldn't that help us to fast-track their permits through the Coastal Commission and DDW?
Okay. The city of Avalon, this is going to get in the weeds, I'm sorry, but the city of Avalon cannot declare a water shortage emergency because we're not a producer of water. The Water Code only allows purveyors of water to declare water shortage emergencies. However, we could use our police power to declare a water shortage, you know, it's calling a different thing. Would that help? I don't know if it will help, because they already know that we're in a dire situation from the multiple conversations that we've had with them. It would be evidence of that, but they know that we're in Stage 3 right now. They understand how people are suffering, they know that we're looking at a growth management ordinance. I don't know if taking an official act and declaring that would, would help. It wouldn't hurt, but I don't believe it would help that much, because they're really aware of how dire things are in Avalon.
Well, and Cindy, along that line too, I think that somebody said, if we did something like that, the press for that, do we want that, you know?
No, but, but that's all part of public relations and marketing too, that, that, you know, you're saying, "Look, we're in a state of emergency, we need you legislators, we need those that are, that are determining where grant monies go to look at us as being the unique situation that we are."
I just remembered, I would not recommend that, because it is our opinion that there is sufficient water produced through the D-Sol plant, that we are not in a water shortage emergency, that there is water available, that there is water available through the D-Sol plant.
Okay. So, then, if, if, kind of some of the things that we've heard over the last couple of years, and I don't, I don't remember if this was actually the truth or if it was just part of conversation, but if Edison is the one who writes the tariffs and submits to the PUC for approval, and we have this idea about changing the tariff that removes the tiered structure based on the middle ranch reservoir, couldn't the city work with Edison to prepare a different tariff? I mean, can't we collaborate together and prepare that to the PUC with exactly what we know our needs are or what we could do, rather than demand that the PUC rewrite the tariff?
I was, I was talking about demanding in conjunction with Edison. Hopefully Edison goes with us and agrees with this, but, you know, we want to make a strong case to the PUC that there's a real reason to change the tariff. And it's always our hope that we do a application jointly with Edison.
Are we not in agreement with Edison on changing the tariff?
I do not believe they are agreement to the extent that we are, in terms of, I believe that our solution is more radical than Edison is currently contemplating.
Well, you might characterize it as being more progressive, and I would, but, but, but let me just comment about the PUC, because I know that's always an issue. You are the city council, and as a city council of elected leaders, you set the policy here. If staff, us, or the community members want input to you to give direction to us, they have free, full freedom to do that. The PUC is like the city council for regulated agencies, regulated water agencies, regulated electric agencies. And so, just as a city council, the PUC should be included to assist us cooperatively, to do things that we may need to do, to encourage both of us, as a council member said, to, to, to work together. They are like the city council for SCE. So, talking to them is asking them for their help, I think is the framework, which you were talking about, asking them to help us with this tariff issue or other issues, is a perfectly rational, normal thing to help us all work together and come to a conclusion that we hope is satisfactory. So, that's, that's the theory behind it.
Well, that wasn't really what I was asking, but, but I understand what you're saying. If, the first question there was, if we're not, if the city and Edison are not in agreement with, with changing the tariff, then I would love to have more information on where our differences are and educate the community on why we wouldn't do, why they would recommend we wouldn't do that or whatnot, because, because we've, we're hearing our presentation tonight, but if you're telling me we're maybe not in agreement, I'd like to know the other side of that too.
And I would just go through the history. We met with Edison three weeks ago, and then after that meeting, I, as I told the mayor, I was still thinking and thinking all night long about a more immediate thing. And, you know, I then discussed with the city manager the revisions of the tariff, and I did phone the attorney from Edison and told him that this is what we'd be proposing. And then, yesterday at our meeting with Edison, we again reiterated to them that this is what we were proposing. They do have some concerns based upon, people are conserving, and so, if we, if we lift the restrictions, will people conserve as much, and then, will the desalination plant not be able to, to keep up? And so, that's why we think of tariff based upon the production capacity of the D-Sol plant, because they have an obligation under the Water Code to produce as much water as a community reasonably needs, and they have the, they have the ability to do it with the current infrastructure. And so, we think that the onus should be on them to say, "This is what you can produce, and this is what the conservation levels should be based upon." And so, if they can't produce it and people aren't conserving during the periods when they can't produce it, why should we be conserving? You know, and so, there'd be a little wiggle room in there, because you always want to account for, for emergencies, but generally speaking, with the tariff, in our view, should be based on capacity. And again, I've discussed this with our water experts and regulators in the firm, and we're all in agreement.
And then, the, do you, based on all of this information that you've presented tonight, do you have any timeline that you foresee for relief from Stage 3 limits? And just timeline in general, how long before funds would be received, and timeline for storage construction? And then, do, do your anticipated timelines of all of these, how do they compare to what Edison's might be?
I think with respect to the timeline on the tariff, we'd actually have to discuss with the PUC on that. They may be able to take action, I think, at the earliest reasonably, on an emergency and expedited basis, maybe two months, but hopefully quicker than that. But we, we, if we go in there united, the chances of getting quicker action are significantly improved. You know, they, they would probably have to issue a, an interim thing, because there is going to be some engineering involved in terms of actually looking at what the capacity is and, and what the use is. But we think that there should be some relief immediately from the Stage 3, based upon the actual production of the D-Sol plant. With respect to the other items, what we want to do is, we want to make certain, in a perfect world, that as much money is coming from the state and federal government as possible. And the unfortunate thing with the state is that it has taken them over a year to develop the regs and applications for, and they're still not done. And so, that process, let's assume best-case scenario, they get it done in November, we're probably looking at another year before they actually grant funds, and then, construction could be a year, a year and a half more. So, we're looking at two to three years, probably on an expedited basis. What we'd like to do is to go in with this process with projects that we agree upon that are ready to go, that we can do some engineering and some soft costs right away, so that when, you know, the grants come and when they're given, we can begin construction immediately. And so, just because we have to wait for the state funds, we don't want to hold up on the engineering and the permitting process. Those are costs, but the big cost is the actual construction. Now, what we are trying to do in the interim is, we are trying to make certain that when the regs come out, they include projects that we're already in-stream, we're already working on, because it doesn't seem to us to be fair for cities and public entities to have these bonds passed years ago, and you're in a water crisis right now, and then you can only, you know, use the money going forward once the grants are given. So, we're working as, as well as we can with them to get some consideration for past expenditures. But, you know, again, there's got to be so many spent upfront, and, and to make certain that, once the money is available, we can use it as quickly as possible. Now, again, we are assuming that we're going to be eligible for grant funds, there's, and everything we've been told is that this is the kind of projects that would qualify, but until we actually get the state to approve it, you know, it's not going, you know, I can't guarantee it, but I can say that we'll put you in the best situation possible. But what I can tell you is, based upon the plan as it currently exists, it's over 300, 300,000 a day, which, when you look at your figures, your average for the year in 2014, the average for the year was 271,000 gallons a day. So, in 2014, your average, you had more than enough at the plant that is, that is built right now.
Cindy McGugan-Cassidy, do you have any other questions?
I'm going to hold off on this last one and wait till, wait till the end if, if need be, because I'm not sure I need to ask it yet.
So, I just, so it sounds as though, from Edison's and the city's perspective, the four things that you're talking about, freshwater storage, construct new saltwater wells refurbished, da-da-da-da-da, and the line to Hamilton Cove, are all things that seems to be pretty much in agreement between the two agencies, all of those.
Yeah, I would say, yes, it's a matter of.
Intensity or whatever.
And, and you're going to put, you know, you're going to put your, your application out there, and you're going to describe your project. And then, the question is, when, if the state makes this consideration and grants money, and it doesn't give you all you want, then it's an issue of prioritizing among the projects that you propose as to what's up. But we, we want to, we want to be realistic, we don't want to overreach.
I know, you're going to some place, I'm not going right now. So, so, there seems to be some, everybody's, the two agencies are kind of agreeing that we want to work in those four areas. But it seems as though in one of the last water meetings we had with, with the group, and what the community wants to hear is the short, the short term. And they, at some point, they weren't going to, they weren't ready for today, but at some point, they're supposed to be coming out with their priorities. And I guess in your discussions with them, do you know that they will be coming forward with some immediate, other than us, the way we may want to go? Do you, are you hearing that they may have some short-term answers?
Jeff?
I know, Jeff, I mean, if you want to come up and speak to that, that's fine, Jeff. You know, I know we're all kind of in agreement on the long-term, but I'm wondering if you all are going to come up with some short-term solutions, because I think that's what the community wants to hear. And thank you for staying with us all this time.
My name is Jeff Lawrence with Southern California Edison, Senior Project Manager. Good evening to everyone on the council. Madam Mayor, if I could, I had some comments and response to the presentation I was giving tonight, in addition to responding to your question, if I could take a little time and...
Sure. Do you think, council?
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Perfect.
All right, thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'd also like to thank the city manager and your staff for the opportunity to meet with you over the last couple of weeks. As it's been, as been shared before, I think we are in alignment in a lot of areas and are in full support of a partnership. As I was sitting down listening to the presentation, I caught the banner to the left here, "Desalination Unit Number 2 Dedication Ceremony," or banner, "Solutions Through Partnership." We are committed to that slogan, our executive leadership is committed to that partnership agreement, so I think we're making good headway. And we have been working with the city for over a year now on strategizing around grant funding. That is one of the primary components of our drought response plan, is positioning ourselves to be ready to apply for Proposition 1 grant funds when the guidelines and the application window is open. There are several aspects to Edison's drought response plan, in addition to various stages of water rationing. As you know, we've completed construction, and the desalination plant number 2 is in service. The, the beauty of that, that plant and that drought mitigation project is that it's a building block, and we can build upon that. Plant number 2 affords us the opportunity now to renovate plant number 1. Without plant number 2, we would have had to take D-Sol offline to be able to bring that plant up to modern technology. That plant is, you know, over 25, 26 years old now, and, and we need, there's a need for some improvements there. Plant 2 affords us that opportunity. Also, we have the water now to justify additional storage. Prior to that, the Baker tanks in town, which provide 375,000 gallons of storage, were adequate for, for plant number 1, under the current conditions that we are experiencing, or the conditions at the time. We are now upon a historic drought approaching its fifth year. We are now upon a historic drought approaching its fifth year. And as was mentioned before, the drought impacts to Catalina are much more severe, because we don't have the ability to import water. So, we are in support of additional storage in Avalon as well. In addition to those first two aspects, we are looking, we have gone through a project prioritization. A number of those projects are suitable for grant funding opportunities, not just Prop One, but other funding opportunities that are out there. We are also looking at projects that are not suitable for grant funding opportunities for various reasons, or they have an immediate impact, they're smaller projects, we want to pursue them now. A number of those projects include third-party agreements. There's a number of third-party agreements that are being actively discussed. There's also a signed agreement, as was mentioned before, for a new deep-water well in Avalon Canyon, which would bring additional source of water without any ratepayer impact for the capital cost of that project. Additionally, we have modified our Schedule 14.1 tariff. So, a lot of the flexibility now that we want to drive towards, that was proposed on an earlier slide for tariff revisions, there is more flexibility in the tariff now. That revision occurred in November of last year. It's not quite where the city would like to see it go. I think that's a long-term goal to achieve. But if I could remind you of a couple of things, the numbers you presented, I'm not going to dispute. But when we're looking at the need for rationing, we need to look at the plant production levels on an aggregate. And the numbers that were presented to you are 100% production, running continuously, non-stop. So, we need to look at unplanned maintenance, we need to look at planned maintenance, and factor that in when we're measuring production capacity to demand. So, we would ratchet that production capacity down to ensure that we are not setting ourselves up for failure by overcommitting to what we can produce to meet demand. Additionally, the rationing that's in place is helping us stay under potentially what we can produce in our Desal plants. So, there would need to be some sort of level of rationing there to ensure that we can remain below that level, which I think is what Scott is suggesting. But until we can reduce or eliminate our reliance on Middle Ranch to meet demand, and Joe, you mentioned it before, we need Middle Ranch as a source of water, a reliable source of water. Until we can ensure that we do not, we can, we can meet water demand without Middle Ranch, that tariff revision would, was more of a long-term goal. And what I'm getting at is, we need to be able to connect all the Avalon customers to the desalination system. And so, there are pipeline projects, there are infrastructure projects that would have to occur before you can talk about a tariff change like that. I think there are some room for improvements, but I don't necessarily think all those edits and improvements could be made at this time. We're not quite there yet.
And that's connecting Hamilton Cove, basically?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, there, I think there is certainly a willingness to discuss potential tariff changes, but we do have some flexibility now, and that is one reason why you're seeing a level of rationing that isn't just 50% across the board. We had flexibility in the percentage of rationing for Avalon, and that's why it was established at 40%, and could potentially be reduced in the future, depending on a number of factors. We've also conducted a drought contingency study, which examined a lot of potential projects more mentioned in staff's presentation, and the resulting project of that was Desal Plant Number Two. And we've also installed transducers to help monitor the water level and the water quality throughout our distribution system on the island. So, now, we can, we can measure and determine when there's drops in water elevation, subsurface drops in water elevation. We can also identify when there is saltwater intrusion occurring in the aquifers, and be more proactive in managing the distribution system. In terms of where we're at with projects related to grant funding opportunities, our goal all along was to be able to run Desal Plant One and Plant Two in parallel. And so, that's, that's one reason why we undertook that project. That's the ultimate goal. We need to increase seawater production to be able to do that, and there's some opportunities also to be able to increase the production capacity in Plant Number One. As I said, it is, is an older technology, an older system. So, there's opportunities there. Additional storage is also something that we're looking at. But there are some opportunities out there that should be considered, in addition to just putting a tank over off of Pebble Beach Road. There, we're doing a technical study, a feasibility study, with a globally-renowned desalination expert. And his report is going to be a big chunk of the information needed for Prop One Desal Grant Funding. And so, that, that study is underway, and we would await the results of his study to determine what the scope of work should be in a Prop One Grant Fund application. It's very likely it will include increasing seawater production and increasing water storage. It may not be a 2 million gallon tank over by the quarry, over by Pebble Beach Road. What it might be is using a reservoir that we have that's out of service right now, which is Whitley Reservoir. We have already started a demo of the roof cover that's there now, and then we're going to do a study on the concrete structure that's there, and also an integrity study on the piping.
How many gallons is that? Excuse me?
There's a potential to produce or to store 250,000 gallons of treated water there.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's like a day's, one day's worth of water.
There's no water in there now?
It's out of service. It needs some work before we could start storing water there and bringing it up to code.
Can I ask you something, Jeff? Right now, the desalination units, when they overproduce water, you can, you can pump water from there up to the Baker tanks, correct?
Correct.
Why wasn't the Baker tanks a place where, that was considered, the 2 million gallon tanks put? Because you already have a system run out, run up there in Pebble Beach.
It will be a consideration of the study that our expert is doing. A location for additional storage will be included in this report.
Thanks a lot, I like, I like what you're saying. I didn't mean to draw you off your, what you're concentrating on, I just, that was kind of important to me.
No, no problem. What we want to look at too, is we want to look at future growth, so we just don't want to build a system that's adequate for today, we want to look at future growth and size our storage units around, around the potential demand growth there. A piece of that is utilizing pipeline extensions to maximize the production from the Desal plant. So, the Desal, the distribution pipeline extension to Hamilton Cove is a favorable project, because it impacts the level of storage that we would need. And so, we would want to use this study from this desalination expert to determine what the proper level of storage is. Whitley Reservoir in itself may not be enough storage, but it may reduce the size that we need if we did put a tank somewhere else. So, there's a number of factors. We're looking at a Desal improvement project that will apply, that will submit an application for, that will include storage, renovating Plant One, looking at operational improvements to both plants collectively, and looking at storage and pipeline extension projects.
And you're looking for grants for this?
Oh, absolutely. So, we have been working with city staff for over a year now, identifying any and every grant opportunity that's out there. There are a number of grants we've already applied for, and we're also positioning ourselves. We've hired a grant funding expert that works out of Sacramento to help us with the application process. She's involved with our monthly meetings that we were holding with the city staff to make sure we are well-positioned for the grant funding window this winter, this fall or this winter, whenever the state has the guidelines ready to go.
Question, have we had conversations with our staff on what has come out of those meetings?
I, I'm not familiar with, with that. I think one of, I think one of the issues is what are we working on, and how does that relate to providing supply and storage in Avalon? And I think that's, that is the issue. I don't have a specific question. I know there's conversations about what we can do in Middle Ranch, or what we might do on this part of the island, or that part of the island. And, but I believe our staff should be focused on how do we address the specific issues that are here in Avalon that need attention? And, and to the extent that we do that, what we do not need, in my opinion, is competing applications for limited grant money, where Avalon's needs are here, and there are then our other needs. It's not to the exclusion of those people, but in terms of where our salaries come from and where we live, it seems to me that the focus of all staff, subordinate staff directors, myself, others, should be focused on what are the opportunities to solve the water problem here in Avalon first, and then we can move forward. So, so to answer your question, I know there's, there has been in the past a lot of work. I think we're trying to reorient our staff to look at grants that help us, the city, the residents, the businesses, the tourists, et cetera, whether it be from HUD, be from Farmers Home, it be from, that's the Department of Agriculture, or it be from state Prop One funds.
I know, I was just wondering, though, if we had had the dialogue with our staff on what was coming out of those meetings for the last year? I don't know if you've had that conversation with, with our staff, and, because you know what they've been talking about, and I just think we might need to do a circle back and see what all of y'all have been...
Yeah, and we have meeting minutes that are made public to the city council and staff that can be circulated if you haven't received them.
Yeah, I don't...
And again, what we did, what our view, we thought our thing was, was to look at this independently of what those discussions were, and come up with it. And then, when we met with Edison, it was apparent that there were a lot of similarities.
Right.
Again, it's, the big, the big, the big one is the timing of the tariff.
No, no.
But I still think there's value in the year that Edison and staff have, have been working. So, there are some grant projects that I know of, that Edison and the city have already been working on, so I think...
I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I think that's what, what you were asking is, could we, is there a way to bring all that to the forefront, so that we can know what has collabora, what, what the collaboration has already been?
I don't see any reason why not.
Yeah, okay. No, good.
I do think that there was some updates in the weekly updates that were in there, that some of those progresses that were being made.
Okay.
Through that partnership, the city became a member of the Gateway Water Management Authority. SAEs has attended some of those meetings, and we're constantly surveilling opportunities for Avalon and for Catalina, and actually looking to host one of their monthly meetings at the Pebble Beach Plant, at the nearest opportunity.
And I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm just going to ask, city, our city manager, are we still attending those monthly meetings?
We attend meetings with the consortium group.
Not the consortium, the Gateway Water Management?
The staff has been, well, we do at the Gateway Waters Meeting, is that what you're referring to?
Are we still going to those?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
To the extent that people are available and are attending, but yes, no, there are people, no, that is important, that's something, a product of previous work that was done that was, that I became aware is very, is very helpful to us. And so...
I vaguely remember both Jordan and Audra McDonald going to those together, and then if there was one that couldn't make it, there was still a secondary staff member. I might be wrong on the names, but I vaguely remember that.
We do see that staff is in attendance at those meetings, yes, yes, ma'am.
Good, thank you.
So, over the course of the last year as well, we have applied for State Water Resources Control Board Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Grants, that's a mouthful.
Wow, can't even type that fast.
And we received word back from them that our projects were not eligible for grant funding at the, at the current time, but there is an opportunity to revisit pending the outcome of the disadvantaged community survey. So, we're monitoring those opportunities as well. We also have pending grant funding applications with the United States Bureau of Reclamation Grants, and we are simply pending a decision on those applications. And so, there's a number of projects that are being considered, that we've submitted applications for, and are prepared to go to engineering and to construction, should a grant be approved.
Okay, great.
So, the primary focus of our grant funding effort is desalination. You know, it is, is the drought-tolerant technology that we are in support of and are pursuing, and have had Prop One Grant Funds on our radar for quite a while. The Plant Number Two project positioned ourselves very well for grant funding under Prop One in the future. There are a number of projects that make a lot of sense, and we could likely request the full amount available under the guidelines, once they're published, based on the scope of work that's recommended in the report that I mentioned to you before.
And then, are those, so, again, this isn't a situation that would be a competing thing, this would be thing we would collaboratively work on?
Yeah, absolutely. So, there, Prop One has a lot of money available that several different water, state water, several state agencies are responsible for administering. So, we need to clarify what is considered a competitive application. There are other grants out there for projects that are not desalination projects, that it is in the ratepayer's best interest for Southern California Edison to apply for. So, we would not be in support of a partnership that prevented our ability to apply for those, those grants that are out there. They benefit everyone on the island. If a project was not in Avalon, let's say, it still benefits the ratepayers of Avalon. You know, our rates are not established geographically, they're established island-wide. So, customers in the interior are help subsidizing the cost for the desalination project, customers in Avalon are helping subsidize costs for Howland's Well. So, these grants would benefit our ratepayers, regardless of where the project was geographically located. And they are grants that are being administered by different agencies, and so, we don't consider them a competitive application. So, we would, we just need to better understand what that condition would be with the partnership agreement, before we could agree to it.
Mayor, if I could just add, if I may, if, if I could, Jeff, I mean, I'm sorry, if I could just add that the only, the focus on Prop One funds has been for the desalinization, if, to the extent that Edison should be complimented for those efforts that they're making to seek other funding for other components, whether it in-city or out-of-city. So, the only, the only component, and I think we've, I thought we've clarified this on, now maybe in writing and in a couple of occasions, as it relates to where there's direct, if there might be some direct competition on funding that would be requested for the city of Avalon, so that we don't have competing applications for the same pool of money, but not separate pools. So, that's, so that's, and I think we're probably in, I think we probably are in agreement.
I think we can work through that, absolutely.
Yeah, and that's why the Desal pool is, we conceptually agree with the same project, and it's a limited pool, and there's not many fish in that pool.
Right.
And we're the big fish.
Additional grant opportunities that are out there that we're monitoring for 2017 include the Tiger Grant, the USBR Water Smart Grant, and the United States Department of Agricultural World Development, I'm sorry, Rural Development Grant. So, all grant funding opportunities that we are positioned to apply for.
I think Jeff made a comment, and I want to make sure that we, we highlight that comment, that even, I will admit, I forget that even though we are in the city of Avalon, we are one rate base, which means the additional 1 to 2 million dollars of the Desal plant is, is going to be borne by the entire rate base, which is the entire island. The million-gallon tank, the Howland's Well rebuild, all of that, we all, as one rate base, bear the burden of the expense of that. And, and in my mind, even yesterday, I was trying to think, well, how do we, how do you, it doesn't feel good to say that the city is more important than, say, Howland's Landing that had no water and was having water trucked in, like, it doesn't feel right to say we're more important than other persons on the island, when we're all one rate base and we're all bearing the cost of getting water to our area, or to what we need.
I don't have a problem with it. We are responsible for our water supply, that's why we're here tonight. Howland's dried their well up. They've...
They have a lot of people down there, and they kept drawing off it and dried it up. It's not our fault that they did that.
Is it their fault that we have increased our number of visitors and persons living in town, that we've overextended our water? I mean, it's sort of the same thing, you know, when we look at 25 years ago, we had half as many people here and half as many visitors, and we keep increasing our demand.
Well, you know, we can't help what our predecessors did, and we're dealing with it now. There's a lot of things we're dealing with like that. Let me ask you something, I want to get real small and practical here. There's some people out here in town, a lot of construction workers, just homeowners, people need water to water their gardens, to wash their houses. Those tote, the tote water costs $2, it costs more than a gallon of water you can buy at Vons. What can we do as a city, us right here, to help the people of Avalon? Can we get a couple water trucks and then go petition Avalon Freight Service, ask them to bring over a couple hundred thousand gallons of water, or maybe 10, 20, 30 gallons, 30,000 gallons, get a couple of 5,000 gallon trucks and give away water so people can wash their houses down and water their plants, and then maybe get a couple of truckloads of fresh water and give it away to the community. People want us to see, they want us to do something now. I mean, we're doing really good thing here, looking into the future, we're hashing this out really well. I think we need to like, just be a little more practical, just for the time being, because what I'm hearing is like, it's gonna be a year before anything happens. We got water right underneath us, that's why I don't understand why it's so insignificant. The water that's underneath here is insignificant, yet there's another company going out there and getting it. It's significant, it's there, it's gonna be theirs, but it could be ours. But we're not focusing on that, and I just wish you'd give a little more focus on that. I think it's really important. It's right underneath us. The wells are this big, they're this big, we could put one right back here where the buses are, wherever.
Again, that's one of the, that's one of the projects that was, we specifically identified in our presentation as wells on city property, noting that there is limited city property, and the past production of those wells, for the dollars that you spend, is you get more gallons with the DSOL than you do with the same money for wells.
It's gotta be a multifaceted effort here. I understand, you're doing what we asked you to do. I'm a little more passionate about the water that the people own in this community, and I don't want to see it taken away from them. And that's exactly what's happening up there on the golf course. Edison is working to deal out with the island company and saying, you can have half that water if you drill the well. Why don't we drill the well and give all the water to the community, even if it's 100,000 gallons a month, or whatever, it's 100,000 gallons a year. I mean, that's just my take on it. I represent people like myself that are more practical thinking and were practical living people, so that's kind of important to me. And the water is important, like, giving away water. I mean, they did it at Howland's down there, Edison did it for, they brought truckload after truckload after truckload of water down there. We're not dying of thirst here, but people are beginning to lose a lot of money. I know guys, I know small contractors that have to buy those totes for like 400 bucks each. You can go buy, you can go buy 300 gallons of water from Vons drinking water and for less than you can buy one of those totes for. If we could, if we could work out a deal with Avalon Freight Service to bring us some water, they got a huge tank in their barges, we get a couple water trucks and give away water to the community. People can bring their own containers, that is, if it's legal.
It's legal.
It's legal.
It's legal, it's just a matter of budgeting the money.
I mean, well, we should start thinking about it, I mean, because we're gonna, we're a year away from this, we're going, we're gonna go into stage four.
Avalon Freight, Mayor, if I may?
Yeah.
Avalon Freight, in a consortium meeting at which two members of the council were present, Mayor, Mayor Protem and I, have said that they can bring water over on the barge, they can bring it in a bladder, specially designed bladders, so that idea, they have posed that idea. But I know this, and you know this, if we do things the same way we've done them in the past and expect different expectations, we will be disappointed. So there is a, it is good that we are focused on the immediate, as you are, council member, and I'm sure all members are. There are some longer term, not long, but other steps that we can take to seek tariff relief, and let's ask the question of those who set the tariff, if they will give relief under the circumstances that we've described, and I think our friends at Edison, I think that's something that we can work toward.
Oh, it's great, what you've covered is great.
Yeah, and, but...
What we've covered is great.
And in terms of the immediate relief though, I'm, businesses as a chamber, as the chamber executive will tell you, at the last two chamber meetings, there's been, at the board meetings, there's been concern about businesses closing for lunch, hotels not renting rooms. So the answer is an immediate answer, more study, more evaluation, more time, may have some benefit, but as a UCLA grad professor once told me, Marvin Hoffenberg, but if it's too late, it doesn't matter. So action, I think what we would like to come out of this meeting is with some direction with our friends at Edison to move, to move us toward a cooperative effort, as, to continue a cooperative effort that we're making, to take some short-term and some longer-term steps that will create a future better than we are currently in the present.
Short-term's great, it's short-term, we've discussed tonight as a year, at least a year. I'm just, I reduce the short-term to immediate, because, and then long-term, 10, 20, 30 years. We don't want to get into this position again, we don't want to do, we don't, we want to have foresight and some direction, that's what we're supposed to do, is direct this policy, in a way that, that we're not gonna get, have this problem again. I think this is pretty dynamic council, and that's why we're talking about this, and I really appreciate the conversation.
Mayor Protem will say.
Can I ask a question to Jeff?
Of course.
Jeff, how much movement has there been in opening up the Descanso Well for non-potable water?
The Descanso Well?
Yeah.
I'm not privy to that, I'm not, is that the St. Catherine's?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure where we stand with that. I know it's on a list of considerations as a drought mitigation plan, but I'm not sure where we stand in terms of...
Couldn't we open that early for non-potable water, for construction water, for ag water and stuff like that, as opposed to, I mean, that's one of Joe's, could be one of Joe's immediate things, because that well produces...
Yeah, there are wells available to us that are being researched for, being made available for non-potable use.
And we'll have that...
How many of them are out there, do you think?
A bunch of them.
Oh, a bunch, oh.
How long do you think the research is gonna take?
It's in progress now. I need to check and find out what our timeline is, but it was, it was a project that we were looking at that wasn't a part of any type of grant funding solution, something that we could do as a short-term mitigation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ollie. Continue, Jeff.
All right. So I'm about to wrap up here. In closing, we understand that the impacts of stage two and stage three are very significant, but preserving our groundwater resources are paramount at this point in time, that's why we have activated stage three water rationing. We do have the flexibility in the tariff though, and can revisit the level of rationing at a future time, and are open to that when the time is right. We understand that rates are high in Catalina, but understand that our current rate structure is not covering the costs for us to, for these drought mitigation projects. And so future projects need to be done prudently to make sure that they are justifiable and to our ratepayers to be able to seek recovery for them. So that's why some of these projects we are waiting grant funding opportunities for. A lot of the conditions in a lot of these grants will not retroactively provide funding if you've already completed significant construction. So some of these projects, we want to make sure are shovel-ready, but don't jeopardize our opportunity to receive grant funding. We're also exploring opportunities for retroactive recovery, depending on the outcome of the disadvantaged community survey. So there are more opportunities there for retroactive recovery pending that outcome. So when I say that capital improvement projects need to be prudent, we want to make sure that we're not just simply building the largest storage facility possible. We want to make sure that it's, we've done the analysis, we can confidently tell you the right amount of storage to meet the demand in Avalon, and to be able to mitigate extended drought periods of time, not just in the current drought, but in future droughts as well. And so we want to encourage the council to consider a partnership that affords us the opportunity to see the results of that study, and what is recommended in that study, and seek grant funding, seek grant funding for desalination improvement project based on the outcome of that study, which will likely include tank storage, we just aren't sure of the location and the capacity at this point in time.
So you're expert gentleman that's doing all the research, and it looks like he's looking in a lot of different directions, plus your staff and whatever, are you looking at, okay, if funding possibilities come available in November, December, if, you think that data will be done by that time?
That is a condition in our purchase order with him, that the study is done in time for the best-case scenario being November for an application window to open for grant funding.
Okay.
Yeah. And he is a world-renowned expert in desalination, and we wanted to wait for him actually to get back from Dubai, where he was working on one of the largest desalination plants in the world, to be able to look at Catalina's water system, so...
His name is Val Franzl, and he is, if you go online, an expert, maybe the expert in desalinization, he has an impressive background.
So, yeah, he is underway, and like I said, his report would probably satisfy 20% to 30% of the documentation needed for a Prop 1 grant fund application for desalination project.
Cool.
Southern California Edison encourages the council to support a partnership to jointly apply for Prop 1 desalination grant funds that allows for flexibility in the scope of projects that will be driven by the technical feasibility, study, data, and research, and a cost-benefit analysis for our ratepayers, and does not hinder SE's ability to apply for other grant funding opportunities that are out there to mitigate the drought. SE does not see the need to seek the commission's intervention here and submit a letter to encourage this partnership, but we will continue to work with the city whether you submit that letter or not. It's not gonna change our course of action with a partnership with the city. What I do want to caution though is what the optics are of such a letter. As Scott mentioned before, an application that is a joint application with the city in Avalon is gonna be highly, more highly rated compared to other projects where they aren't showing that collaboration and that partnership. And so we are in full support of that partnership. If, I'd hate to see the, that letter convey a message that we are not cooperating and collaborating with each other. If other state agencies found out a letter was submitted to commission because Edison and Catalina are not getting along, we had to get the commission to intervene. I don't think it's necessary, and I'd hate to risk the impact of that letter from an optics and a perception standpoint for these grant funding opportunities, but we intend to work with the city on a partnership agreement, absolutely.
I think we finally got their attention.
Why did it take so long? This has been coming down the line for years.
And I think the frustration of the community, as we saw in the last council meeting, is city of Avalon, what are you gonna do? And I mean, if the people here today say, boy, we've come a long way, baby, in two weeks, I think that's fantastic. Again, I'm still a little concerned with the short-term, the very short-term, because we're not hearing that from you all yet, and I don't know when we're gonna hear that, and if we are even gonna, I mean, if there is no short-term, just let us know. But if you're coming up with a short-term in the next month or two or three, we really need to know that so the torches can be put away.
Yeah, there are projects that are being considered, Councilmember Olson brought up one of the projects, is looking at a supply of water for non-potable use. We'd also want to look at the conditions of the Prop 1 grant funding to see if there are opportunities to start those projects while the application is pending and a decision is pending. So there might be an opportunity for a project that might be nine months to 12 months in duration, to be able to get something done in 2017, depending on the...
I wouldn't give that a lot.
Jeff, if one of the discussions that we've had at different meeting levels, the original plan of the second DSOL unit was to run simultaneously and independently of Plant Number One. We know we have to go through the process, we're now at that running in brine mode, 325,000 gallons, but working together, those plants can produce 450 to potentially even 500,000 gallons of water. The numbers are a little different each time I hear them. So wouldn't that be the short-term solution, is to finalize that permitting? And if that is the case, what could we do as our city's legislative body here to help push through that permitting process and be able to do, seek whatever it is you guys are waiting for permit-wise, so that you can run simultaneously? Because to me, that seems like, if that is the case, that's the short-term solution. And that's why I keep mentioning a state of emergency, whether or not you can initiate a state of emergency, does that help us? It may not help fast-track, and if, that's what I'm saying, just tell me no if that's the case, and we'll move on. But what can we do to get those permits online?
I don't know the answer to your question about the state of emergency. I can tell you, we are considering that as a mitigation project. I don't know that I would categorize it as a short-term solution though. I'm not quite as optimistic as Mr. Campbell in terms of, you know, what, how long it would take to get the permits that would be necessary for the various agencies that have jurisdiction over that type of project to review and bless the project. But I can tell you, we are actively citing the location of new seawater wells, and would intend to start submitting applications for permits prior to submitting applications for grant funding.
So you can't do any...
So that, the applications for these permits are in the queue.
That's the answer, you can't do anything until you have more draw. We don't have enough draw capacity from seawaters.
You need more wells.
That's why.
Right.
Nevermind.
Then we can start running in parallel.
Yes.
You guys ever talk about solar, solar grid to offset the cost of running these desalination units constant? I know...
I'm not aware of anything that's been done recently. I think, prior to my arrival, I think they've looked at it, I'd have to research that for you.
Yeah, that's a good idea, because long-term, we definitely want to offset the cost of that, those 3 million gallons of diesel fuel that we burn every year, so if we had a solar grid, and I know, I think Edison, well, actually, I know Edison actually had a few spots selected that were appropriate for that, but it's on conservancy property, I believe, but either way, I just wanted to throw that in, because I've got a lot of constituents that tell me all the time, solar energy is like, it's there.
I think it's been looked at, and we likely have an answer for you, I'll be happy to come back with the response.
All right, cool, thanks Jeff, appreciate it. That was...
Thank you.
Good deal. Jeff, well, Chuck Martin, you stand up, please.
Chuck Martin, 352 Catalina. The problem is, as you said too, we don't have a well, enough saltwater wells to, didn't we do the cart before the horse? I mean, we bought a DSOL plant knowing that we need more well capacity.
No.
So why buy it? I mean, we spent a million dollars, and we don't have the capacity to run it.
No, what the DSOL Unit Number Two did was, the Plant Number One is a really, really old plant, and when it makes the DSOL water, because it's based on old technology, the brine that comes out of that, it's got a lot of water, and so what the new unit does is it takes that brine, and we get an additional 120,000 gallons a day that we didn't get without that unit.
So really, the bottom line is probably just what Cindy said. So, really, the bottom line is probably just what Cindy said, we need to get this release. If we were to have that thing tomorrow morning, what stage would we be in? If we were to use capacity rather than the reservoir?
Don't have the storage.
What stage would you put us in tomorrow?
If we had what tomorrow's...
If you went to capacity rather than Middle Ranch reservoir levels, if you went to capacity tomorrow...
Production capacity?
Just whatever capacity you're talking about there, what stage would we be in, using what our current production is?
I don't understand.
Why? Because you don't have to use Middle Ranch?
Capacity max.
I'm saying, if you got this, whatever you have to repeal to get us to use the production levels rather than the reservoir, where would we be today?
So, right now, with our current production...
You're in phase three, because you're using Middle Ranch. What if you didn't use it? What if you used...
Have you adjusted the level of rationing for the plant? Because we got the D-SAL plant.
Jeff...
The D-SAL plant...
Mike, Mike.
The D-SAL plant can put out, if you're talking about the number one pushing the brine into two and getting more water, we're way over what we need.
We don't have the storage for it.
But if it ran continually, it would just go in, and we would, I think that's what Chuck is saying.
If we're generating more water from the D-SAL plants than we need, then it sounds like the levels that we are allowed to use from the PUC won't let us use all that water. You've got to get it changed, or something changed.
Chuck, on Monday and Tuesday, we make more water than we need. On Friday, Saturday, we don't make enough water, because the demand goes up and down, and that's the whole discussion about storage. If we had more storage, we could level out the output from the plants, and we could do that, if we want to run the plants 100% all the time. They don't want to do that, which makes sense, because you don't want to run anything mechanically all the time at 100%.
So, they just don't want to do it.
No, no, it's not prudent to run a piece of equipment 100% of the time. It will break, and when it breaks, then we're out of, and it works.
It's not prudent to go into phase four either.
We're not going to phase four. We're not going to phase four.
Sounds like...
And, yes, Steve?
Oh, they're going to start coming out of the woodwork.
Steve Jones, 342 Metropole. I'm sorry, Steve Jones, 342 Metropole. We're talking about storage is the most important thing with desalinated water. You're only as good as your storage capacity. You need, that's all we need in this town right now, is storage capacity. We're going to be out of water by next year, guys. You said 274,000 gallons that we use average a daily, but what about the days that we're producing only maybe 170,000 gallons, and that machine could produce 300,000 gallons? You're losing 130,000 gallons to me. This is so simple, guys. This is so simple. The only thing focused right now, Hamilton Cove pulls 12 million gallons of water a year, okay? That's a lot. That's 40 acres a foot, close to 40 acres a foot. By themselves, we will be out of water. March 31st, 2016, we're at a 195, or right between 195, 193. We're at 135 now. In six months from now, we're going to be at 70. And after summer, what are we going to be at? We're going to be out of water. The only thing that matters right now is that we get storage. Without it, we're done. I'm telling you. We have enough water right now in our reservoir to do a family of five, for a family of five, only 139 families can survive off that. Of five. Factual information. The desalination plant at Carlsbad is an absolute marvel. It produces 52 million gallons of drinking water a day. I don't seem to understand what's, the main thing is, I can buy you 200 systems. It's not going to fix it. You're only as good as your storage capacity. That's the only efforts that should be concentrated. Did you guys apply for grant funding, for the money in stage, wait, sorry, round one, round two, round three, and four, Prop 1 and Prop 50? That, there was all this available money that was sitting out there, and in round three, there was only $8 million given away. Now, we're waiting to round four, when everything hits the fan? It seems like Edison's doing the bare minimum right now, just what they have to. You're going to spend all that money on Whitley? That doesn't make sense to me. Why would you do that, when a million gallon storage tank costs between $400 and $800,000? There's a man that works for the LA County Water District that lives here, that loves this island, told me the cost of it. It's simple. Multiple storage tanks, forget that, you pump everything to Baker Tank with bypass lines, so when you shut down for maintenance, like you guys are going to be doing shortly, you do it, bypass lines, multiple storage tanks, 250,000 gallons, gravity-fed into the line. If you pumped it, if you can pump there, you can pump across. Every portion of this town will benefit off of it. Every portion. This meeting wasn't supposed to be about Edison, because I came here to try to help everybody out here. Are you the new city manager? Straight on the point. That's good. Everything, we need to cut to the, guys, we don't do something now. The only, I mean, I'm passionate. Nobody knows, I don't worry about stuff in my life, I really don't, but this has me scared, and everybody should be scared. You guys, are you going to run motions, do this, do this, do that? I'm going to start putting in home D-SAL systems, and I just want to know why I can't do them. That's the only short-term thing that will fix this right now. By the time you go with all the red tape that's going on right now, it'll take forever to get the grant funding and all this. You want, the water's delivered to our home, right at the doorstep. There are so many people here that are on freshwater. All of Pedley Beach is on freshwater that the town doesn't know about. Hamilton Cove, I mean, they're the ones that bought it. Is it our fault that you guys didn't upkeep it? No, it's not. You have Hamilton Cove, you have, I mean, there's, I've been putting in so many freshwater lines, I mean, saltwater lines, too, that people have been going on the toilets. I'm telling you, numbers do not lie. We are going to be out of water shortly, if you don't get storage. Storage, 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 that's it. That's your fix. That's the concerted efforts, that's all it needs to be right now, is storage. That's it. You have your long-term, short-term goals, but you need to get storage. That's it. You're going to try to educate the public to drink in sewer water, that'll never fly, because people, no matter what they do, I mean, is it an alternative form of energy? Of course. I have a plan put together to get Hamilton Cove off-grid, that I have to present to them. Basically, all freshwater out there, by themselves producing water. I'm going to put in D-SAL systems in homes, without ever dropping a drop of water, of brine, into their sewer systems. That's your fix, right there, guys. That's your fix. The water is delivered to our homes right now, for right now, temporary, because like you said, to me, every day that they have to turn off that machine, that it's not pumping water, we are losing it. How much does Baker Tank hold?
375,000.
I was told 60,000, 375,000?
Just three of them.
Between the three of them? Okay. Between the three of them, okay. Wow. It's not enough.
Yeah.
For one day.
That's not enough. It's all you make, what about the days that you don't, what about the day that you don't produce that much? When you only burn it through 170,000 gallons of water, and you have the ability to make 300,000, you're losing 130. That 130 is very valuable. Every drop matters. Our trees are dying, the deer, everything on this island is dying. It makes it hard for the fire department, it makes it hard for everybody. Our rates are going up. How much do we pay an acre a foot, sir? Do you know how much? You don't have those numbers? The average acre a foot down in San Diego, they sell to the city of San Diego at $2,200 an acre a foot. I like to see our numbers, I think I know what they are, but I can't quote, but I can't, you know, I know it's a lot higher.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
I'm sorry, we kind of limit everybody to about three minutes on this, so if you can kind of wrap up, we appreciate what you're saying, and...
You want a short-term fix, storage. That's it. Storage.
Yes.
Thank you.
We're hearing you loud and clear. Thank you. Nice of you to come up, Steve.
Okay, a couple things. First, I agree, getting the PUC to change the rules is probably a good idea, short-term. I think we should be looking for grant money to upgrade old plant number one, and start building plant number three, because plant number two's not going to solve the problem. We need more than that, and we definitely need storage capacity. So, a couple of things. One, I want to remind everybody that swimming pools are emergency storage capacity water tanks, lots of cities use them for that purpose. Next, something I've brought up several times, when the cruise ships are in town, they're using, those people are using our water, why aren't we getting the water from the cruise ships? They have D-SAL plants on the ships, why aren't we bringing it ashore every Monday and Tuesday? I think that's something we could negotiate with them. San Diego buys water from the Navy, from the ships when they're in port. I don't know why we can't trade the water for the people when they're in port on the days cruise ships are here. I agree residential D-SAL units are still the way to go. I know you don't want to hear that, but lots of people in town are doing it, whether you like it or not, it's happening. So, I think you should encourage it, rather than discourage it, because it's going on anyway, whether you like it or not. The next thing is, why isn't Edison bringing in the water for us? I agree Joe's right on this. As a real short-term solution, Edison could give each household in this community one of those 500-gallon water tanks. It would cost and take about the same amount of space as our hinged trashcans. They take the same amount of space, they cost right about the same amount of money. You could give a 500-gallon unit to every house in this community, we could fill it up with two days running of the D-SAL plant, everybody could have a spare 500 gallons on site for doing whatever they need to do, whether it's watering, or cleaning, or whatever. But I think we need to look at short-term solutions for storage, not just a million-gallon tank, but small amounts on the premises. It's relatively inexpensive to do that, and like I said, it'd take up about the same amount of space as our trashcans. So, again, just, you know, keep looking for other alternatives, particularly the short-term ones. These long-term ones aren't going to solve our problem right now.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Bruce Verdig, 329 Catalina. I've been home watching most of this, so if I'm redundant on anything, apologize. Some points that were made earlier, Scott mentioned the fact that the D-SAL water is very expensive compared to Thompson. Joe mentioned the importance of, Thompson is always going to be an important asset to us, and the D-SAL is a big component of anything that we have going right now. It's also the most expensive. And we've talked about, you've talked about the expense and the trouble of locating a location in town to increase storage and whatnot, then it is expensive. We have a lot of storage capacity in one location, and that's Thompson Reservoir. It is designed to capture runoff water, but it also is a holding tank for any other source of water that we have, that we want to pump back to it. A number of years ago, which wouldn't help us right now during the drought, but we used to pump water from Hay Press back to Thompson, which again, right now, wouldn't help much. But we do have a source very close to Thompson Reservoir of water that, Edison, or not Edison, the island company has paid for a test well, much like they've done up the canyon here. And it was very successful. There's a lot of water there. There was an issue at the time with the conservancy, they were concerned, they had concerns. They weren't trying to shut the thing down, but they had concerns about the possible effects downstream of pumping the water from this other aquifer that has nothing to do with Thompson Reservoir. And now, we're in a different situation, and we've had a change in management with the conservancy, perhaps there's a little more of a collegial atmosphere, maybe the new operation realizes that we're all in this together, we need to work together, and maybe it's just a matter of funding a test, a scientific test, to see whether the pumping of this water, but 40 years ago, this would have just been part of the Edison system. If they would have had this well, that would have been, it would have been running for 40 years. These are different times, different agencies you have to work with, but Thompson is our, that's our existing storage capacity, and there's a lot of it out there, and everything that's been said tonight as far as short-term, and maybe this isn't short-term, but for the long-term, if we can increase our capacity from Thompson, we're going to be able to keep our rates a little more manageable. God bless the D-SAL, we would be out of water probably right now if we didn't have it. Thank you.
You can at least go put the period at the end of the sentence.
Well, no, I heard...
No, you did, good.
I heard the chimes, I had to stop. That's it.
Because tomorrow night, when the chimes go off...
Yeah, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Yeah, that would be, yeah, I was in some of those meetings with, up there, and over that, so that might be an interesting conversation to have again, on that additional well. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Here we go.
Wow. I have seven pages of notes.
So, what we're supposed to do today...
Madam Mayor, you have heard a lot of testimony and a lot of input from people both in the community and from yourselves about the issues, and while we think that we, we think we're pretty on target as a staff, I think it might be useful to take the information, comments made, take it back to us, and then bring it, this matter back again, where we can have some time to talk about it, maybe talk with our friends at SCE also, have a little conversation in the near term. That's somewhat of an inside joke, but have that conversation, and then bring back something, because I, it sounds like we have a lot of area of agreement. We have some differences, but those differences can be worked out, and maybe in a, by having some additional conversation, taking the input that you've talked about, short-term, very, very short-term, talk about the longer-term, we all agree on storage, maybe we need to synthesize into three or four recommendations that would be of benefit to the council to consider. Would that be, sound reasonable to you?
That makes good...
Go direct it.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you, because you put together a lot of information in two weeks, and we really appreciate that. I mean, you said you were going to come here on the 20th with something, and by God, you've done it. I really, hats off to you for that. And I hope the community sees that we are trying, but I think, yeah, we're going to continue to have due diligence and work with our friends, our friends at Edison, as you say, and I think we're good.
I think it's probably one of the greatest water conversations we've had yet.
Oh, yeah.
And I'm thoroughly encouraged to hear all of the different grants that Edison is going after, aside from Prop 1 funding. I mean, that's what we've heard all along for the last year or more, is Prop 1, Prop 1, Prop 1, but the fact that Edison has already gone after some and is continuing is very encouraging. So, I think we owe it to at least say, you know, thank you for sharing all of the things that Edison is doing, because it helps us when we're out there on the street, talking to people, and we're not sure what has already been underway. This now gives us things that we can talk about that are, that are actually happening.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Just to be, keep the record complete, I think we should hold over item eight.
Yes.
Just do it that way.
And I agree absolutely with you.
And one thing that I will tell you, that our lobbyist that's in Washington, who's knowledgeable about this new federal program, has made an appointment with the city manager to talk about those opportunities, because we want to, everyone's been focused on the state funding, and then this federal bond and all these grants just came out of the blue a couple of weeks ago. And so, you know, that's additional money, and so, our lobbyists will be talking with Mr. Jenkins about that.
So, Madam Mayor, council, if we, we'll target two weeks, but realizing that we need input from a few, from Edison and others, we, I think they sense the urgency, we certainly sense the urgency. We'll target two weeks, if it takes a little longer because of information that they need to bring back, but then what we want to bring back are specific action items that relate to those issues that you've raised, and have been raised by the public here tonight.
I like that.
And, you know, and to piggyback onto Joe's comment, you know, and, because Doug Bombard, Greg Bombard was at one of the water meetings, and he talked about bringing water over, and then there was, and a lot of this gets too technical for me, Joe, but the whole thing, okay, how do we get it from ship to shore? And to have those things spelled out, the how we actually do, that would be good, that short-term stuff, even if it is just for washing my house, or, you know, whatever.
It's your asset, that's your investment.
So, I want to thank you...
It can be done, it can be done. It can be done.
Yeah.
We had some good comments, too. Thank everybody for coming and participating. Stevie and Tony, thanks for coming tonight. It's important that you were here. Bruce, you made some good points.
Good night, Tony.
Thanks, Jeff. I really appreciate it.
We'll just go down the road. Thank you, Lynn. It's nice to see you, and Chuck and Pam.
They're my friends. It's my family here.
Anyway, I think, if there's no further comments, the gavel will go. Good night, Tony.
Good night, Tony.